So we can start the meeting.
Good, okay. Good evening, everybody, calling to order the Tuesday, November 10th, 2020 Market City Planning Commission meeting. We're going to start with our roll call, so I'll call your name. Please say here, Commissioner Andres.
President.
Commissioner Middlefelt.
Here.
Commissioner Primo. Wayne, Commissioner Primo.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Ruiz. Tony. Are you there, Commissioner Ruiz?
Here.
Okay, and so we're just missing Commissioner.
Here.
Thank you, got it. And then Commissioner Cardillo is here. Moving on to the agenda, Dave let us know, or was it Andrea let us know that.
There is one change.
There is a change.
To address. The applicant for the first case A under new business has requested to remove that because they were able to comply with the site plan requirements and don't need an extension at this point.
So with that said, removing item 4A, can somebody make a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Great, can we get a second?
Second, Erin Andrews.
Right, Commissioner Middlefelt, second by Commissioner Andres. All in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? Are there any comments or changes you'd like made to the minutes? Seeing as how nobody has any comments, we can approve the minutes by consent. Moving on to conflict of interest, does anybody have a conflict of interest that they would like to raise at this time?
Was the, was the project that was just removed, that was the 351 application?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that, I have no, I have no conflict then.
Okay. Okay. Um, okay, so there are no conflict of interest, so we can move on to our public hearing, which is item A 14 SUP-11-20, 214 North Sixth Street, special land use permit. Dave? Or Andrea?
Okay, I'll be sharing my screen here.
Right.
Staff has reviewed the special land use permit for the conversion of a single-family home to a duplex dwelling located at 214 North Sixth Street. The Board of Zoning Appeals approved a three-foot side yard variance and a 1,000-square-foot lot area variance from the City of Marquette Land Development Code's Special Land Use Required Conditions for a duplex dwelling at their October 1st, 2020 regular meeting. Attached in the agenda was this memo and the staff report analysis, which included information about the zoning district and the duplex dwelling required to, conditions that I just referred to, and pointed out that where the variances were. And then the standards for a special land use review that the planning commission, sorry about that, that the planning commission have to determine if this meets that. And then additional comments, kind of giving the background of the case. And then the applicant's special use permit application with the required narrative, the area map, the parcels outlined in blue, the block map, again, the parcels outlined in blue, photos of the site, and the location sketch. I did not receive any correspondence for this. Did you guys have any questions for me?
You have any questions for staff? Commissioner Dunn?
Hey, just a, just a quick question regarding procedure, and it, I guess it doesn't really apply in this case since I missed the, that particular meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals. But under normal circumstances, if I had already voted on it, should I recuse myself in this situation or abstain from voting? Or if I had, you know, if I had already voted on this application to approve the, the variances, is there any, is there any conflict there that I'm not aware of?
No, you would be able to as the Board of Zoning Appeals, because you're reviewing it for variances and different sections of the code. Now you're reviewing it for the special land use section and as conversion to a duplex, so you're looking at different requirements of the code.
Okay.
But correct me if I'm wrong, Dave.
No, that's, I totally agree with what you said.
Okay.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, that's all I needed.
Um, Commissioner Middlefelt.
So you mentioned there were no correspondence about this, is this something when there's a conversion to duplex, are immediate neighbors notified, or how wide is the circle of people getting notified? Sure, when we have public hearings on the agenda, they're all, have to be notified per state law, 300 feet from the property lines. So they all get a letter, and then I also put a notice in the Mining Journal. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Commissioner Larson?
It said that, in, in the comment section there, it said that they originally had applied for an address for duplex, but you found it wasn't a legal duplex. Was it? What made it not a legal, was it operating as a duplex previously, I guess that was.
No. And I forgot to mention in the staff report and scroll down to it, there were the Board of Zoning Appeal minutes in there, and that's where the applicant kind of described why the house is kind of made to be a duplex. It was families living in there, like a, her grandmother with her aunt and things like that, but it's always been a single-family home, and now they're applying to be a duplex.
Got it.
But she could probably provide you more of that background, the personal background, if you want to ask her that question.
Oh, no, that, that's fair, I just, I just, just curious about, you know, that it was originally granted, then kind of rescinded upon additional information that came out, I was just looking for clarity there, that's all.
Sure.
Commissioner Dunn, did you have a? Yeah, Commissioner Dunn.
Yeah, sorry, I had another question. Is this applicant the, the owner, or I, this property is under contract, and I'm wondering if this is the owner or if this is the buyer for the place?
Okay, so this applicant would be the property owner?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we have the applicant speak on behalf? Okay, then, Andrew, do you want to bring in our applicant?
And the property owner Susan Kelly, I'm bringing her in.
Good evening, Ms. Kelly, if you just want to give us a little introduction to your application?
Sure, I have a house that I inherited that is been, over the years, constructed into a duplex, which the upstairs has the kitchen, bedrooms, bathroom, living room, and the house has doors to each of those apartments. My folks never rented it as a duplex, they had us using upstairs as kids when we came to visit and everything, so I've moved out to Ishamene, and I'm selling the house, and I, right now I just have one renter upstairs, and I'm hoping that I can sell to a person that will live in the downstairs and just rent the upstairs, kind of owner-occupied rental. It's got a two-car garage, long, very long driveway, smaller yard, but big enough, it's got two decks, one upstairs and one down for extra living space. I don't know what kind of questions you have, but I'm happy to answer anything that you have.
Do we have any questions for our applicant? Okay, Ms. Kelly, oh, sorry, Commissioner Larson, did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just gonna just follow up a little bit on Sarah's previous comment, and Ms. Kelly, was there, had, are there any issues within the neighbors, have they presented? Or are they well aware that, you know, there's kind of two apartments, you know, there? And I know they, they would have been notified, but I didn't know if there was any history.
Yeah. Well, it's funny, because the neighbor down the hill in the orange house is, he grew up in that house, and my father grew up in the house that I inherited, so they were buddies when they were little kids, so he's well aware, he's helped, done some of the work on the house. Cookie across the street is fine, the folks across the street just moved in, and then there's another house next door that's rented to college kids. However, I don't think it's a duplex status, so none of them have said that they have any issues with it over the years, so, no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, Ms. Kelly, if you want to just put, go on mute, and if you have any questions, just be available to ask you, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, and so we have no correspondence, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Um, and there's nobody from the public that wants to speak on behalf of this application here?
Well, that I don't know, we know one, but there's two others, are you wanting me to, or want us to bring them in and then just verify that?
I think we should, yeah.
Okay, one's coming in as a Philip Tutont.
Mr. Phillips is for Pine, or Philip Tutont is for Pine Street.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Sorry, we're gonna bring you back out of the meeting.
We'll call you back in later, Mr. Tutont.
What about the other one then, Dave?
I, David Poggy, I don't know that name.
Okay, I'll bring, we'll bring him in then.
Oji? That's probably the Hewitt Street, but let's find out. It's not coming in, I, I do have a feeling he's here for Hewitt or Pine.
Exactly.
What?
Are you, are you asking me?
Is this Mr. Poggy?
Yes, it is.
Oh, okay, sorry, we can, we can, we can't see you, but I, so I didn't know if you were there, you're here to, to talk about the street reconstructions projects?
Yeah.
For Hewitt or Pine or both?
Well, I'm right on the, I'm right on the corner, so I've got both, yeah.
Okay, so we'll bring you back in when we get to those items, we just wanted to make sure you weren't here to speak on this public hearing.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine, thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, so we don't have any public testimony, so we can move on to either commissioner discussion or, or emotions, so what do you guys think? Do you have any, anybody have issues that they want to suspend for a discussion? Or is everybody, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward to me, I don't really have a lot of issues with it, so if somebody wants to do a motion, unless there's somebody that wants to suspend for discussion, I would be fine with just having a motion as well.
I'll, I'll make a motion.
Great.
So after, after review of the staff report and analysis for 14 SUP-11-20, the planning commission finds that the request meets the intent and requirements of the Land Development Code's Sections 54.1403 and 54.613, and hereby approves 14 SUP-11-20 with, with the, with conditions that do we have, do we have conditions?
Are there any conditions, Andrea?
Sorry, none suggested.
So as presented. We'll approve it as presented.
Erin Andrews, vote.
Okay, so we've got Commissioner Larson with the motion, and Commissioner, Commissioner Andres with the second, so I'll do a roll call now. Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo? Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so, excuse me, the motion carries. Good luck with your house, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
All right, thanks, have a good evening.
So what do I have left to do to?
I'm gonna send you an email right now.
Okay, and that's that, I don't have to reply or do anything else?
Yep, I'll send you the email, and we'll, I'll tell you what, what's the next step.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Do you want me to stay for any longer?
No, you don't need to.
I got a rolling board meeting, so I'm trying to fly in there.
Glad we got you out of here quick. Uh, okay, so we, moving on to citizens wishing to address the commission on agenda items, and I just want to, we will give the public a chance to speak after each of the street reconstruction items is presented. So unless there's somebody that really wants to speak now, I would encourage you to maybe do it then. So Dave, do you think we need to bring anybody in, or?
No, I think we, we have everybody, we know which project each person wants to speak on.
Okay, so then we can move on, we have no old business, so now we can go to, we're skipping item 4A because that's been taken care of, so we can move on to item 4B.
Okay, I'm gonna share my screen now and go to the agenda. Let me find our. Okay, so we're gonna start with, actually, I need to look at another document here on my desktop. I'm gonna put this up, and I don't know if, I hope, hopefully you can read that. But I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak to this memo here, just for everybody's information. The city engineer Mick Kipola and his staff have prepared the proposed street cross-sections and the associated utility replacements for seven street reconstruction projects that will be reconstructed in 2021. Seven, four of the seven projects will be reviewed tonight, and then we have another three that will be reviewed on November 17th. These projects are brought to the planning commission for recommendations on primarily the street cross-sections. But they've been subject to comprehensive analysis, a process that evaluates several characteristics of the street, including the surface condition of the pavement, via a pavement surface evaluation and rating system, the Pazer rating system, as some of you are well aware, this is a 1 to 10 scale type of thing. And that looks at, as well as the type and age and condition of the utilities underneath the road structure and their likelihood of failure, and these projects are prioritized as a function of the City of Marquette's Capital Improvements Plan, which includes a six-year program for implementation of the civil infrastructure, these kind of projects that are implemented annually and updated regularly. That is, the CIP, the Capital Improvements Plan is updated annually, basically as these projects are brought forward and completed, and sometimes they're not always completed as presented in the plan on a six-year basis, but that's why we have the program to update them annually. I did include this document and a pie chart of the CIP funding program, and that basically calls out all the funds that are in the annual program and how they are allocated to the different different subcategories for funding, and we're in the street system funds here. And via the city's annual budget process, the city manager projects an amount of funds that will be available for these projects. And from that, the city engineer selects the highest priority street reconstruction projects from the CIP that will fit into that projected budget. And then this entire process is outlined in the city charter, so this, it's a very well-regulated kind of program, and with that, I'll move on to the first item, which is our front-street reconstruction project, and I'll skip down here to what the planning commission, now, just for each of these projects, we have fact sheet, an area map, illustrations of the cross-sections that are proposed in the existing cross-sections. We include the notification letter in the planning commission packet that was sent to the property owners, and then if we received correspondence before the app, the agenda was sent out, that is in this agenda packet, we have received several items of correspondence since the agenda was sent out last week, and I will address those per each of these four cases, but the planning commission is asked to approve these proposed cross-sections as the design for the reconstruction of the street, and that has to do with the relationship there is the community master plan, and the community master plan has basically a set of guidelines for these street reconstructions, and an idealized street cross-section for each type of street as they're classified under the the national classification system that most municipalities use to classify streets. Now, several of these items of correspondence have addressed that not all of these projects fit the classification, and on some of these streets, the, the profile of the street changes quite a bit from one, even sometimes one block to another, but, you know, one area of, of town, some of these streets are, you know, traverse quite a few different kind of topologies or neighborhoods, and they change, but they have to be classified under one thing or another, so that's where these that's where the recommendations come from in the master plan, and front-street is classified as an urban major collector. And the design recommendations for major collector streets are two 12-inch, or for 12-inch, 12-inch, 12-foot driving lanes, eight-foot parking lanes, and eight-foot sidewalks. This segment of front-street between Magnetic Street and Fair Avenue is 30.4 feet wide with no on-street parking, and there is a sidewalk on both sides of the street. The street structure, curbing, and water main are past their useful lives, and the proposed street reconstruction project has a 31-foot width, I'll go to the cross-sections here, this is the existing. And the proposed, from Magnetic to Fair facing north, so the proposed cross-section is a 31-foot width with the same sidewalk features with its train, a change from straight curb to type 2C2 curb, curb and gutter, or curb and gutter pan. The travel lanes are proposed to be reduced slightly by about 14 inches overall, and the C2 curb allows for parking over the gutter pan, so there'll be no practical difference in the size of the travel lanes with this street. And the details on the water sanitary, sanitary, and storm facilities in the right-of-way are in that fact sheet, but at this point, I would say we, we have a recommended motion or action in the memo for, for the planning commission to consider this. This map, it's a little hard to see, but the blue cloud right here shows the area we're talking about, we have a legend here with the street utilities that are in that portion of the corridor, and the city engineer will make any comments now that he, he wants to make on this project, so go ahead, Mick.
There, unmuted myself. Let me just share my screen here for a minute. Actually, it says I can't do that.
Dave, if you un-share your screen, will that allow?
Yeah.
Mr. Kipola to share his?
Problems with the fully expanding my little window, what am I missing here? Okay.
Actually make him the host, don't you, enable him to share?
Right.
So if you go participants, and you
So, so. Yeah.
If you.
Get to his.
Dave, do you want me?
No, I've, I've got it.
You got it, okay.
Nick, you're co-host here.
Okay, I'll try that again, sure, it says, this will stop, okay. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so Dave, Dave covered a lot of, of what we're planning here, what's proposed here, but so this is the front-street reconstruction from Magnetic to Fair. Here's the fact sheet, it covers the, the right-of-way width, the existing street width, the type of curbing that's out there, there's sidewalk on both sides. Currently, there's no parking on either side of the street. As you can see, the, the water main is very old, past its useful life, and undersized, and the, the existing sanitary sewer is over 100 years old as well. The storm sewer doing a lot better. And Dave talked about the, the Pazer rating, the street is rated, rated as a four, so it's, it's definitely in its decline. The primary issues with this street is the infrastructure is past its useful life, the proposal is to upgrade all of the, or upgrade the, all the infrastructure along with rebuilding the road to, I guess, to modern cross-section as far as pavement thickness and the use of curb and gutter. The proposed width of 31 feet, that's based off of what's been approved previously south of here, in 2019, the planning commission approved the three sections of front-street, and the section immediately south of here is, is 31 feet, so that's what that recommendation is based off of. And as I mentioned, we'll be replacing the, the water main, and also the sanitary sewer, curb and gutter, and then the sidewalk as needed, and then also doing any sort of storm sewer upgrades. And then here's the cross, cross-sections that, that Dave already showed, the existing street. And then the proposed cross-section here, would there be just a little bit of widening on both sides as far as the back of curb? I guess, 0.6 feet to be exact, so. Yeah, I think that's all I had, so.
Uh, okay, do we have any? Do we have anybody, so Dave, trying to think.
We don't have any correspondence or anybody that wanted to address this street.
This one in particular, okay. So let's go to our commissioners, does anybody have any questions for Dave or for Mr. Kipola? Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yeah, thanks, and I just wanted to say congratulations to Mick too, on the promotion, it's exciting, I think a lot of us are excited to see some new young fresh perspectives in the city engineering department, so congratulations, we're really excited if you're in that position. I had a question about the curb and gutter system as opposed to the straight curbing, is there? I don't know anything about that, is that to prevent flooding in anticipation of more like storm events, or can you talk a little bit about some of the decisions to go to that curb and gutter system?
Sure. So with the straight curb system, the, the stormwater runoff is running kind of in a, I guess, an L-shaped channel between the, the curb I guess L-shaped channel between the the curb and the road, and water can easily infiltrate in that interface between the asphalt and the curb. Um, and a lot of times what you'll see, uh, especially in the older streets is the pavement begin to uh, deteriorate prematurely. So with the with the curb and gutter system, the gutter uh, captures all those smaller flows um, within the concrete, so. If that makes sense.
Yeah, thank you.
More robust, right?
Um, yeah.
Sorry, what did you say, Dave? I'm sorry, I missed that.
They said the concrete is a is a much more robust surface than asphalt. The hot mix asphalt is soft by comparison.
Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, so, this is kind of a hypothetical for my own education, but if uh, the city was to be uh, burying electrical cables or um, y- you know, um, fiber optic or anything of that nature, does that need to be done at the same time that streets are being reconstructed, or can that can that be done at at different times?
Um, I would say with as far as electrical goes, typically the the BLP has replaced their underground street lighting circuits during these these projects. Um, as far as uh, fiber optics and such, um, and those have been done, uh, those had typically have not been done during these projects. A lot of those are those are aerial utilities. Um, but if they do need to install them at a later point in time, they can uh, uh, sometimes they directionally bore them in using kind of a trenchless technology, so.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I I just have a quick question, and it's it's not really an issue on this one. I think it might come up down the line, though, which is um, you know, I understand this change to the new curb and gutter and the technology behind that, so I I have no real questions about that. I guess my question is, you know, now that we have this sort of you know, L-shaped curb, concrete curb, it you know, it shows that you sort of measure the lane width from the inside edge of that, even though we sort of all understand that, you know, people are going to use the full width of the street. And so why why is it that we can't sort of measure the street or lane width, including the sort of horizontal portion of that curb?
Sure, um, so I guess we we've done it both ways in the past. If if there's been, um, I know there's been street cross sections that have been presented in the past with the road width, including the the gutter pan. Um, the reason that I don't have that included is the community master plan. Um, uh, the the dimensions in there are described as uh, from the edge of asphalt to the edge of asphalt. So
Hmm.
I hope that helps.
Okay.
So I guess, yes, the streets, you know, could be could be narrowed by, you know, two feet if you included the the gutter pan as as part of the the road cross section.
Okay, I just, I don't think it's a big issue on this one because it's a pretty minor minor increase. I just think we're gonna maybe be talking about this on a couple of the later.
Yeah, absolutely.
Good question. Mick and I have talked about that, maybe um, amending that part of the plan to actually allow us to include that, because it does make sense when we're considering it. If we have on-street parking, most people are gonna park over that part of the street anyway.
Yeah, I mean, there's there's no practical way to get people to not park as close to the curb as possible, so, you know.
Sure, and actually, on in on s- section six dash twenty-seven of the community master plan, I believe, um, it describes in there that the uh, the gutter pan was left out of the the street calculations uh, as a consideration as requested by the Department of Public Works. I think that's what the initial um, they they wanted it there perhaps for snow storage uh, or extra width to maneuver the plows, perhaps.
Yeah. Winter considerations, the street narrows up all the time, and maybe that's part of the consideration of you get extra snow that really narrows the street down, and maybe it doesn't make sense to always include that.
Okay, well, like I said, it doesn't seem like this, it's a big issue on on this one, but um, we'll we'll see if it comes up to down the line. Um, okay, do we have any other questions from our commissioners regarding this? This one? Uh, yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, this is uh, like you said, a continuation of what was done um, on front street already, so. Um, and and it doesn't seem to be making any significant change. You know, it's a matter of inches on each side to the to the sidewalk and grass. Um, area in between the sidewalk and street, so I don't I don't really have any issues uh, on this one, and neither does the public. Is there anybody that wants to make a motion?
I can go ahead and make a motion.
Great.
After review of the proposed cross sections and associated background information for one dash S T R dash eleven dash twenty, the front street uh, reconstruction project, um, the planning commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the street, the street reconstruction design as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have Commissioner Middlefield with the motion and Commissioner Dunn with the second. Uh, do a roll call. Uh, vote. Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Yes.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion carried.
Okay, I'll share a screen again, and. Our next project is uh, the College Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. And I'm I'm not gonna repeat a lot of uh, what Mick might cover here. I just say this is another, I think all of these streets we're talking about today are classified as urban collectors, and and those of you who know these streets uh, well, know, some of them probably don't really match up to, like I said, what an urban collector is ideally described as here in the master plan, but those uh, design recommendations are twelve foot driving lanes, eight foot parking lanes, eight foot sidewalks. Um, obviously, eight foot sidewalks occur on rarely on streets in these type of neighborhoods, so these projects that we're talking about tonight. This is a street with a twenty-five foot wide cross section, seventeen foot travel lane and a seven foot designated on-street parking space. Uh, and this is what is referred to as a yield street in the community master plan, because one car has to yield to allow another car to come by when there are cars parked in that space where all three cars would meet. So um, this layout doesn't conform to the street classification, but this street has functioned this way for decades, and the placement of the light poles on the south side of the streets presents a significant constraint to widening the street. And there is sidewalk on both sides of the street. Uh, it's a fifty-foot right of way. And um, I'll let Mick take it from there. Uh, I have all the stuff here, Mick, if you want, just me to go to the cross sections here or whatever. Mick?
All right, can you hear me now? All right. Okay, so this is the the College Avenue Reconstruction Project. Um, it's uh, there's three blocks involved, starting at Presque Isle uh, and going all the way to Front Street. Um, and the the right of way here is is quite narrow, fifty feet, and as Dave mentioned, uh, the street is, you know, approximately twenty-five feet wide. The the westerly most block between uh, Presque Isle and Third, um, that has no parking on it, but then um, the the other two blocks have parking on the south side, so. Um, this this also has the the straight curbing that we talked about, uh, existing sidewalk on both sides. Um, and the parking like I talked about there. Uh, the the water main on this on these streets is is very old, and there's uh, one block that does not have uh, a water main on it, and the the homes are serviced by a shared small diameter service line, so that's been a an ongoing issue, so hopefully this project will take care of that. Uh, the sanitary sewer, you can see there, it's over a hundred years old. Um, and there's either no storm sewer, or there's some uh, older storm sewer on on those three blocks. Uh, the Pesa rating, a portion of it is a two, which is very poor, and then a portion of it is a four, which is slightly better. Um, and like I talked about, I guess the the utilities are outdated on on these three blocks, and the the street is is past its useful life. Um, so the the proposal here, and this is just uh, objective proposal based on the the community master plan and cross sections, um, is to to upgrade the the street cross section, replace the the utilities, and the first block um, between Presque Isle and Third, we could put into the urban collector cross section with no parking, which is twenty-seven feet wide, and then between uh, Third and Front, uh, we could keep the same uh, yield street uh, setup and I guess up update it to the what the master plan uh, has called out, and that's also twenty-seven feet wide. Um, and as Dave mentioned before, uh, the even though college is a uh, major collector between Third and Front, uh, by my estimation, it it would be uh, almost impossible to get that cross section through there without eliminating parking on on that section of street. Um, let's see, I already covered the utility replacement, and yes, the curb and gutter, or the curb will be replaced with curb and gutter. Um, sidewalk, we're planning on replacing that only as needed for for utility replacements. Um, and then also, we would be extending uh, storm sewer to accommodate uh, those flows. Um, let's see, we have the the existing cross sections here, uh, twenty-five feet wide, back of curb to back of curb between Presque Isle and Third. Um, let's see, Third to Second, same thing, except for we have parking now on one side. It's basically centered in the road. Um, Second to Front, you can see that the road has shifted uh, quite a bit to the north. Um, and I guess with all these cross sections, we have uh, utility poles in that South uh, Boulevard. Uh, and these are the the proposed cross sections. Um, from uh, Presque Isle to Third, this one fits the community master plan for a uh, a collector street with two twelve-foot lanes, so it'd be increasing the width by uh, of one foot on each side. And then on the next section here, same thing, it'd be increasing the the width of the street by approximately a a foot on each side with keeping the uh, the the local yield stretch, your local yield setup that's currently there. Um, then the last block uh, from Second to Front, um, we'd also continue that that local yield setup um, with most of the widening happening on the south side of the road, because there was a quite a bit of Boulevard there. Um, but there's also uh, a fairly recent utility pole line through here, so we're trying to avoid that. Um, as you can see, here's the uh, the overview of the the project. Um, we talked about that there is uh, no, let's see, no water main on one section of this road. Um, and then this section here wa- uh, lacks any sanitary sewer, so those are kind of big driving factors behind this this project. So I think that's all I have right now.
We do have an item of correspondence for College Avenue. And we received this today from Kurt and Sue Goodman of one oh six West College to the planning commission. Please consider this correspondence to support the City Marquette's Engineering Department's proposed street reconstruction project designed for College Avenue between Third and Street and Front Street as referenced in the fact sheet dated October twenty-second twenty twenty. Our home located at one oh six West College will be installing new water service lines and sewer lateral lines, eliminating a shared sewer line and replacing the water service line, providing increased pressure. We'd also like to request the project would include repairing the BLP light post wiring that's currently temporarily wired above ground. This light pole is critical for the safety of the neighborhood. Thank you for the opportunity to comment, Kurt and Sue Goodman. I did forward that um, to Mick earlier today, and um, Mick has probably been in touch with Kurt Goodman directly about this.
Um, not this directly, but uh, yeah, I can I can certainly forward this on to the uh, the the BLP as part of their um, their work during this project, so. The electrical part, so.
That's it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Uh, just another quick question. Why the different cross sections for the one? Well, I guess it's one block, the between Presque Isle and Third, it wa- is, do we not? Is there a reason why we don't want it to be consistent for all three blocks?
Uh, currently, there wasn't parking on that on that block, um, so I just left the the parking out. Um, so that was the the rationale, I guess.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Um, yeah, I I'm very familiar with college. I often bike this when I'm going from my home to campus, and it is like biking through the apocalypse. The road is really bad, and I was just wondering, are there plans to do the portion of college um, that's west of Presque Isle, because it's really bad by like the old hospital and stuff. It's really bad, so I was wondering what the the thoughts were on the future of College Ave?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I get that a lot. Uh, in twenty twenty-two, uh, we have a a local urban uh, grant through MDOT, and we're planning on uh, uh, doing that section of street between uh, Presque Isle and Seventh uh, then, so.
Thanks.
Um, Nick, so are you gonna have to relocate any utility poles or not you will get any utility poles with this scenario?
Uh, we may need to nudge some over. I mean, it's like, the BLP may need to uh, bore next to the utility poles and s- and slide them over. We're hoping not to. I guess this probably circles back to if we were to uh, consider the the gutter pan as part of the the road width, we would probably likely not need to do that, because it essentially keeps the street as the the same width as it as it is currently.
Yeah, I guess I guess I would just like to be open to doing that. I I mean, again, this one doesn't seem, it doesn't seem like there are any neighbors that are are against the widening of the street, but um, you know, I I certainly think keeping our streets see, not needlessly making them wider than they need to be just to control the speed of traffic, um, as well as kind of maintaining as much green space in between as possible. So I mean, I I understand you're saying that the master plan sort of lays out not including that, but um, I would certainly be open, whether it's sort of universally or on a case-by-case basis to including the gutter pan in that width. Is that a decision you can sort of make in the field so that you don't have to move a utility pole?
Um, I mean, no, it's definitely something that we want to make, you know, right right now in advance before we we start designing, and I think, I mean, Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but that that would be a planning commission decision, whether or not uh, um, you would like to to go that route.
Um, absolutely. Yeah.
And i- it has been done in the past. And i- it has been done in the past, and I think w- w- I guess with all these street recommendations, I'm trying to just be objective and 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 go with the the master plan rather than uh, you know, promote some sort of deviation from it.
And I totally understand that. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get it like, is there any other reason? But I guess I'm just trying to sort of understand, like, is there a reason other than it's just we're just not including it? Like, is is there like some engineering reason why we're not including the width of the road?
I I would say I I would say on these on these two way streets, I don't think there's a a real good engineering reason to not include it. I mean, it might be an inconvenience to the public if uh the road is becomes really narrow and uh you know, they have to go very slowly through through a section. It more like, or I think it becomes more of an issue on one way streets where, you know, uh I guess on the two way street, you'll go from a, you know, like a two way street to a local yield street or just a narrow local local yield street rather like on a one way street, you can end up with a safety issue where if the uh street becomes really narrow, emergency vehicles won't be able to get through, so.
But if you're including the gutter pan, it's going to essentially be the same width that it's supposed to be, correct?
Correct. I guess I'm, yeah, sorry, I was I misspoke there. And I'm talking about like during the winter time, a lot of times streets narrow uh due to snow accumulation, so that's when it becomes the issue, sorry.
Thank you. Um Commissioners, does anybody else have thoughts on this regarding sort of including the gutter pan versus not? We want to leave this one as it is? Commissioner Dunn?
I I agree with you on the gutter pan. Um for all of these, I I think we should be looking at the at the functional width of it and I'm of the mindset that we don't, we don't want to make them i- in residential areas, we don't want to make them any wider than we have to. Um and so I, you know, I would like to do that measurement, uh you know, from from the back of the gutter pan a- as we were talking about. Additionally, on this particular one, I'm I'm a little bit torn. I I I feel like it should either, I feel like it should be consistent for all three blocks. Um either either there is parking for all three blocks or there's not. Um I don't know if that's actually feasible or not, but that that area where it switches from from Third Street to Presque Isle where it it there's, there isn't parking there. I- i- it seems like that where the switch is is where there's some difficulty. Um i- if it's if it's consistently narrow the whole way, I think you just you just sort of adapt to it, but where that where it changes from from having parking to not having parking is where the where there's a little bit of difficulty. Now, maybe there's, you know, maybe there's a a reason for that that I'm not aware of. But it just, it seems to me like we should at least try and get it to be consistent all the way across there.
Well, I guess the one thing I would say about that is I I do think the 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 parking between Third Street and is it Third and Second is is really critical just because parking on Third Street is so critical. So I I would rather see more parking, like extend the parking than remove the parking if if that were on the table. Dave, is there, do you have any any thoughts on Commissioner Dunn's comment?
My only thoughts is we have the basically the same street width. I'm not really sure um about why we have a shared traveling described on two blocks and it's basically almost described as uh, well, yeah, I I would agree that taking, if you're removing parking, that is a pretty big deal for people that have always had it and you don't want to do that without so more a more robust process to involve those people.
So what if we added parking to that section between Presque Isle and Third?
My thought is if it's functioned this way as long as it has and there's no issues with it to to basically put it back the same way with a little wider street because of the gutter pan, then that's what should be done. That's that's my view.
So, oh, just, I'm trying to figure out. So we've got parking from Second to Front. Right? And then
Yeah, so there's there's
from Presque to Third.
I I would
Commissioner Larson?
I would I would say that, you know, I for the first point, using the 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 back of the gutter pan to the back of the gutter pan, I think that would be, it makes sense to me as far as, you know, with the road goes. Uh as far as adding parking to the one section that doesn't, um I I while I'm in favor of adding parking typically, because it hasn't had parking, I I think it would really come down to that, those that ma- those those people on that street on whether that would be appropriate or not, especially if, you know, they there's never been parking there for, you know, for for decades, then all of a sudden there is parking. I I think they they would have to be involved, that block should be involved in that that discussion.
That's a good point. Telling that we haven't got any correspondence, you know, urging that change.
Anybody, oh Commissioner Andres?
Yes, I I would concur with adding the gutter pan. I would say that if we're going to have the discussion about adding parking, of course, we need to add the public, but to have it go back to the way is adding the government gutter pan is the way I would go.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I guess I kind of concur about, I I do think it it would be, it's like, I just wouldn't want to sort of slip this in. I I mean, on the one hand, you know, if those are residential, it's mostly residential homes there and theoretically they would want to have some street parking, but you know, we've we've been wrong on these assumptions before, and so perhaps it should. Dave, sorry?
Yeah, I I didn't look into this. I didn't really think about this um particular issue much, but you know, sometimes there is parking removed from a block by the the police with traffic control because of some issue that arose. I mean, that hat that does occur from time to time, and we have a traffic and parking committee and it's possible. I don't know if Mick has any history, but it's possible that there's some reason why the parking might have been removed from that street in the past. It could have been a yield street all the way through.
I guess I just have one thought. Um it being that the the three blocks are the proposed width would be the same, parking could be added to that Third to to Presque Isle block at at a later point in time, so the I don't think the street width would necessarily hinder that, so.
And I'm thinking that it's possible that that is the way that um it's it's been recommended to not have parking on there because that is an extremely busy corridor through there sometimes. Those streets between Third and Presque Isle tend to get a lot of traffic sometimes, especially if you've ever been down there during a hockey, when hockey games let out, it's crazy.
And actually
that all makes sense to me, and I actually just had the same thought about the the parking. It's probably more a matter of striping and signage than i- i- if the width is there, then we've got what we need to do it later, so. Not a big deal.
Right. Okay, so so is everybody on board with sort of our motion including the cha- kind of wo- would we approve it but with the condition that the width of the street go from or include the gutter pans? Is that is that the way we could word this potentially, Dave?
I don't think that's necessary because
You don't?
Uh that's just semantics, really. It's we're approving the cross section as presented, correct?
I think that it should be included that that the, well, because the the street cross section would now be twenty five feet back of curb to back of curb instead of twenty seven because we'd be uh including the the one foot of gutter pan in the in the calculation.
Right.
Right.
So I'm just asking how you how you want us, do you want, oh, oh, sorry, Commissioner Primo, you have a comment?
Yeah, I mean, who rides in the gutter pan? Half the time you got storm sewer curb boxes there that end up sticking up a little bit or down a little bit. You can't ride in the gutter. I mean, it's not a good idea. They're riding in the gutter. I mean, how many people are gonna people just normally don't drive. It would be like driving next to a wall, same thing. People don't do it. They're not gonna ride in the gutter.
But I do think people park there, and I I do think for the sake of, you know, the you know, you're right, people don't drive right up to the edge, but I think the width of the road includes sort of a reasonable amount of excess. And I think it's acceptable to include that within the sort of reasonable amount of excess space you have for a lane.
Well. And last, we're talking about a physical change to these cross sections that were presented. I mean, you're approving uh the motion as to prove it as presented.
So Dave, there there would be a change to the the cross section because the cross section is a twenty seven foot wide cross section instead of what we're talking about is a twenty five foot wide cross section.
Proposed is twenty
Proposed twenty, proposed is twenty seven, so the so if you subtracted the 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 two feet, the one foot on gutter from gutter pan on each side, that would bring the proposed cross section down to twenty five for each of them.
What do you think, guys? Do we? Wayne?
With that curb and gutter type, they got F two and C two. You don't really have a foot of gutter because that comes down. It's six inches on the top, but it comes down in the face, curves out. Well, I don't think you can count a foot there. Because you'd be sliding down the edge of that gutter, that curb. I think I'm right on that because we've put in a lot of curve. You know what I mean?
You said, but you said
Across the top six inches and then goes down the face on an angle and comes into the pan. Well, that's a pan. I don't think there's a full foot. I second look in the book here.
Yeah, I think Wayne's right. I think there might be more like eight inches of pan instead of, you know, eight or ten, eight or ten inches of pan instead of a full foot, but.
Well, it would be nice to know what that is.
Yeah, I can look it up right now, so.
Commissioner Larson?
Yeah, well, I I get I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be the confused one here, but I think I was on the on the line on the side of of Dave originally saying that it's mostly semantics because I mean, we're doing it as presented, so like the actual, it's not actually gonna but like the streetscape here isn't actually gonna change. Uh it would, we would just be saying, hey, the 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 lanes would be, it would be twenty seven feet from back of gutter to back of back of gutter. And I I guess maybe I'm maybe I'm confused as far as as how that, you know, how we're kind of ranking it then. Does that, does that make sense, Dave? I think I was on your on your same page where it was some that semantics of
I don't really see a need to say anything other than as presented because the dimensions, unless the physical dimensions, you're asking for a change in those physical dimensions that are presented. No matter what, how you describe the street cross section, it's the same as what's presented.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing.
I I'm confused because I I I I think that we are proposing a dimensional change to the cross section and that we're reducing it by by two feet to so that the the asphalt is gonna get a little bit narrower compared to what's presented. But the the back of the curb to back of the curb measurement is gonna stay the same to what's existing on the street right now.
Yeah, you're just moving the arrows on the drawing. You're not actually gonna move the actual concrete and asphalt from what's presented.
No, we are.
Yeah.
What?
I thought you were just talking about moving the arrows and saying this is
No, what I what I'm saying is, so the way I understood Mike Mick explaining it was, you know, the the width of the street is based on having a seven foot and a seventeen foot, right? And then he's adding to that the one and a half on each side.
Yeah.
Right? And what I'm saying is, can we take one foot from each side, or maybe it's nine inches from each side, and add that back into the center dimension?
That's what I'm saying. I I want to advise that because it's um, I I mean, it's co- over complicating things. Because you don't know exactly how much you're adding to the street with by adding eight or nine or ten inches from the gutter pan. If you're gonna prove this cross section that was presented, it's the same physical length as you you're not talking about an actual physical change on the ground from what's presented. You're talking about changing the dimensions on the drawing. And I don't see a need to change that in your motion, ma- make any reference to that in your motion.
I guess I'm confused now.
I think, I don't know, I I I agree with Joy. I think so if we if we utilize a portion of the gutter pan as the street width, then we would be shrinking down the back of curb to back of curb dimension.
I I understand where you're coming from, Mick, but the that means we gotta go back to the last case and and adjust. If we're gonna
Okay.
adjusting the
Sure.
referencing the specific dimensions written above the arrow. I I don't, I don't see a need for that. I get where everybody's coming from on it's a different dimension, but it's the same actual plan for physically laying out the street. It's just we're gonna pencil in different numbers based on the the gutter pan counting as part of the street width.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Um so I share in some of the confusion that um Commissioner Dunn and Larson expressed too, and and I think and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because I know we're gonna be talking about Hewitt and Pine next, but I think it's a relevant point. So is the reason why the width, which was a concern to people for the Hewitt and Pine project, the reason we had to widen these streets, is it because of this where we're measuring the gutter and the pan? Is that really like the one thing that made these streets need to be wider? Just, you know what I mean? I guess I'm just trying to get a clarification on like
I guess, yeah, jumping ahead to Hewitt and Pine. So on Hewitt, that was just the the dimensions as laid out in the community master plan, which was edge of pavement to edge of pavement with a foot and a half on each side for the the curb and gutter. So that's the, that's the reason for their recommendation. And then on Pine, actually, the recommendation on that is gonna be for a local street with a foot and a half of curb and gutter on each side.
Okay, so it wasn't just this like new curb system. It had more to do, was it outlined in the community master plan?
That's what, that's what it's all all based off of, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Well, we'll have more questions for that one, too, I'm sure, but I was just trying to also get clarity on like what's the measuring of the street and what is it? Is it the specific curbing technology that adds? You know, space or is it something different, but? Yeah, I guess I'm less concerned about the College Street and the um, what was that first one we looked at, Front Street? Because those to me, um I mean, there are residential properties there, but they are more closely integrated with commercial uses and different, it seems a little bit different. Um so I was okay with this College Street one, and also that street really does need some attention, so. That's kind of where I'm sitting with the College Street one.
Commissioner Andres?
Yes, I after clarification, I I think we should fix the road, but leave it as it.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, that's that's kind of what I'm trying to say too is to to simplify i- i- is what I'm hoping we can do is keep the measurement from the vertical portion of the curb to the opposite vertical portion of the curb, that measurement to be the same as what it is now. A- and so however that works with the drawings and and putting it in place, I I I think that may actually mean that the asphalt or the or the the actual the asphalt or the, or the the actual pavement part of the road is slightly narrower than what is recommended in the master plan. Um, but I'm okay with that because I think that we're addressing the intent of the master plan. It's just how we, how we're fitting these curbs into the, into the situation. And so, again, to try and, to try and keep it simple, what I'm hoping we can do is not change the width of the roads from, from vertical curb to vertical curb. I don't want it, don't want to see it change from what it says right now.
Right, and I guess that was where I was going with it as well, um.
And that, that physical width of the asphalt stays the same. We're actually adding a little bit with the curb, but again, it's really not. I kind of agree with Wayne that it's not something we should really consider as extra street width necessarily for, people don't typically drive on it. You might park over the ass, the concrete, but.
I mean, I think, I, again, I guess I agree with Commissioner Middlefield. I, I mean, I would be willing to go ahead with it on this one because it's, you know, doesn't seem to be as big of an issue. I just think that when we get to the next two, it's gonna, you know, become, there's gonna be more of an interest in maybe having that conversation.
I, I agree on this one. I'm not, I'm not worried about it on this one. I'm thinking more ahead.
Okay, so do we wanna go ahead and make a motion on this one then, with it as is?
I can make a motion.
Sure.
After review of the proposed cross sections and associated background information for O two dash S T R dash eleven dash twenty, the College Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the street reconduct, reconstruction design as presented.
Erin Andrews, support.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Middlefield with the motion and Commissioner Andres with the second. And I'll do roll call now. Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Yep.
Commissioner Primo?
Yeah.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so the motion carries.
Okay, so our next, uh, project is three S T R eleven twenty, the Avenue Street Reconstruction Project. And, uh, for this one, we do have a couple items, correspondence, and we have some people that would like to speak on the issue as well as another urban collector. We have, uh, this project between Pine Street and Spruce on Hewitt. Forty foot wide street with eleven and a half foot travel lanes and an eight foot designated on-street parking space on each side of the street. And I'll let Mick describe the details here and then we can come to the correspondence.
Dave, before we start on this one, I I got a few, uh, number of texts about people that were trying to get in on on these, on the, especially the Pine Street one. Uh, I don't know if we can ensure that they get in or or what needs to happen for them.
Um, we have four people in our waiting room. I don't know about what you're talking about with texts and.
Someone, for the Pine Street project, uh, Mr. Toutant texted me and said that he'd like to be, actually be able to, uh, observe it. Did they observe it through YouTube then? Is that what they're supposed to do?
He's in the waiting room, so we'll bring him in when, when we're talking about Pine.
Okay.
Uh, we have, um, at least two people wanting to talk about Pine. I'm not sure which one Mr. Poggi was here for. Do you remember, Joy?
He's here for both. He lives on the corner of Hewitt and.
And so is, uh, Mary Swift, so, and I have two pieces of correspondence to read for this one, so. But we'll let Mick talk about the specific details first.
Sure, thanks, Dave. Um, so I'll share my screen here. All right. All right, so Hewitt Avenue, uh, the, the proposed plan is to to reconstruct it from, uh, Pine Street to Spruce, Spruce Street. Uh, the right-of-way is eighty feet wide. The current street cross section is forty feet from the back of the curb to the back of the curb. Um, the existing curb is the, the straight curbing. There is sidewalk on both sides, parking on both sides. Uh, the, the water main here is very old, I think a hundred and thirty years old approximately. Um, and, uh, the sewer is very old as well, along with the storm sewer. Um, it's currently rated a five on the Pazer scale, uh, but the, the primary issues, I guess, are, oh, the street structure is in decline.
Then text message to Jenny note.
Um, I don't know, but the, but the utilities are are definitely in their, in their decline, so those need, need to get replaced here. Um, so the proposal is to to reconstruct the, the road, bring the, the pavement up to to modern standards. Um, and then also to, um, replace these utilities listed below. Uh, the, the proposed street width is based on the, the community master plan for a, uh, a collector street, and that's forty feet wide from edge of pavement to edge of pavement, or forty-three feet wide from the back of the curb to the back of the curb. And as I mentioned, the utilities, the water main is very old and needs to be upsized and replaced. Uh, sanitary sewer needs to be, uh, re- replaced as well. Uh, it's old and in poor shape. And the proposal is to replace the, the, the straight curb with curb and gutter. And sidewalk would only be replaced as, as needed, um, uh, for u- for utility work. And then storm sewer would be extended, uh, from the, the, the Pine Street intersection as well, or not, sorry, this, uh, this Spruce Street intersection. Um, and then I guess on one side, no, the, the V L P is planning on reconstructing the, the whole utility pole line along that section of street this summer as well. Um, here is the, uh, the existing cross section and here, um, so you can see the eight-foot lane, parking lanes, eleven and a half foot travel lanes, eight-foot parking lane. Um, the proposed cross section from the community master plan has the uh, eight-foot parking lanes and two twelve-foot driving lanes, uh, with a total width of forty-three feet, um, which if we were to go with, with this cross section, it would see widen the street by approximately a, a foot and a half on, on either side. And here's, uh, just an aerial, uh, view of the street here. So yeah, I think that's, that's all I had.
Okay, um, do we want to bring in, we lost Dave. I think we probably want to bring in the public at this point, unless you guys have questions right now for Mick. It might be helpful to hear the public and then we can have a discussion. But we lost Dave, so. Here it is.
Hey, sorry.
Hi, uh, so I think if you want to bring in the public, we can have them.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, uh, I, I got messages from people saying they can't hear the meeting. Uh, I'm not sure what's going on. This meeting is on the city's website on, or on YouTube and, um, all that information was in the uh, public viewing and participation information that was sent in the property owner notifications.
And, and Dave, I, I think part of it was that they weren't using both YouTube and Zoom.
Right.
I think, I think some of them were just expecting that they'd be able to view the matter on Zoom.
Yeah, well, the, uh, letter said there's a, you, there's a, uh, YouTube livestream with twenty-second delay, so that is where people should be, um, finding that, and that the link is in there for the City of Marquette's YouTube channel, which is on City of Marquette's homepage. They can get there through that. Uh, correspondence, um, I'll, I'll let those people in. We can go to correspondence afterwards. Uh, let's see, we have Hewitt. Letting Mr. Poggi in the room. Let's see, meeting. Mr. Poggi, can you hear us?
Okay, hi, Mr. Poggi, um, if you want, you can take, we have, uh, three minutes. Please give us your comments.
Yeah, uh, my, my, I have a question, though. Uh, I, I thought this was gonna be a meeting where, where people were gonna be a- all able to hear what was going on in the meeting.
That information was provided in the letter you got for the YouTube livestream?
Yeah, I, I, that's how I got onto it, right? Onto the Zoom? Oh, for the YouTube.
No, that's a different.
Okay, is that, is that recorded then, that I could get on that?
Yes.
Okay, I tell you what, you know, uh, I'll, I'll just make mine real short and sweet and then, um, and then get on to reading that myself. Um, my, my question was, uh, I, I, again, the logic behind it, I've heard a lot of different people saying different things, but, uh, I, I wanted to know where you were in the process of this and, and, and what the reasoning for the, the, uh, the, um, the construction project is.
Mick, can you take that?
Yeah, I can answer that. Uh, so I guess the, are, are you talking about the Hewitt Avenue between Pine and Spruce?
Well, you know, I'm, I'm right on the corner of Pine and Spruce.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm right on the corner of Pine and Hewitt.
Pine and Hewitt, okay. Um, so I guess the, the primary factor for, for both, uh, reconstruction projects is the, the age of the utilities on, uh, on Hewitt Avenue, the, the, the water main is from, from eighteen eighty-seven and the, the, the sanitary sewer is from eighteen ninety-one, so they're, uh, well past their useful life and they're also, the, the water main is four inch, so it's, it's a, a undersized, um. So I guess utility replacement, I would say, is the, the, the primary driving factor, um.
Excuse me, that, uh, and I've, and I've heard all of that as well, so I appreciate you going through that. I should have been more, more clear in that, not making you go through that.
Sure.
I, I guess my question is, I, I, I understand that you're just gonna try to, to tie a couple of projects in together. And the, the, the concern that I have is not the, the fact that there's gonna be some construction for, for some of the, uh, some of the out, out of date, out of code, hundred-year-old, uh, you know, um, infrastructure, but why the, uh, the road itself was going to be, uh, widened, uh, and that some of the buffer zones between the homes and the street and the sidewalk, uh, are gonna be impacted, uh, greatly. And, uh, I, I understand the, 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 um, the reasoning for doing two projects at once and not having to come back and cut up something else at another time. But that doesn't mean, I don't think, that you can't, uh, re, you, in, in the reconstruction of the roads, you can't keep them at the same width as they already are with the parking on one side as it already is. Uh, i- i- and, and, and really destroy a lot of the, the, you know, natural beauty of that, of, of, of this area.
Sure, um, and the, the recommended cross sections that are, are in the fact sheets are, are, I guess, a starting point based on the, on, on the community master plan. Um, so that, that's where, where, where those came from. Um, and I, I believe the planning commission will take, you know, your, your thoughts into consideration, so.
Yeah, so, so what, what's, what's the next phase of this then? What, what, what happens next? I'll, I'll go and read my, my, my YouTube or watch my YouTube program.
So, Mr. Poggi, just to, to, um, clarify, what, what Mr. Kippl is saying is, is basically, he came up with this new dimension based on, there are sort of certain standards set out for how wide a parking lane should be, how li- wide a driving lane should be. And then we have this condition with the new style of construction. We have a, a new style of curb, which adds some width. And so that is, you know, those things combined, you know, we're going from an eleven and a half lane, I'm speaking specifically about Hewitt Street, to a twelve-foot lane, which is just a, a sort of standardized thing that in our master plan, we've tried to implement sort of equally throughout the, the city. Um, I hear exactly what you're saying, and we are, as a, as a planning commission, are gonna sort of definitely take that into discussion because, you know, we are going from a forty-foot street to a forty-three-foot street. And so it's sort of, we'll sit here and have a conversation, taking into account your, your comments about, is that necessary? Are there things we can do to economize? Um, but just to explain from Mr. Kippl's perspective, he, he's going off of sort of certain standards of construction that are being put throughout the whole city.
Sure, yeah, that makes perfect sense. My, my, my question, though, and, and the reason for the, the question is, is the, the, I understand the infrastructure needs and I understand coding and all that other stuff. But, uh, you know, it's, it's a high-traffic area for children going to the schools. And now by ma- making the sidewalks that much closer to, well, they, to be in code, they'll have to be even further away from the street, uh, than what they currently are, I, I would imagine. I, I haven't looked at the local codes on that, but, but when they do that, that's gonna put sidewalks running right adjacent to homes on certain sides of the, of the road. And there, I, I understand uniformity and I understand being up to code and all, and all the other stuff. But unless you're gonna move those houses back further away from the street and the curbs that you're putting in, then it makes more sense to, to, uh, uh, at, at least as long as you're gonna have people living and, uh, around here, um, that you, it would make more sense to keep them as a first priority and then work back from that and, and deal with your codes and your projects and what makes sense to work projects together, I, I think.
Yeah, I, I hear you, Mr. Poggi, and I absolutely think, you know, you, I, I hope you'll, you can go on mute when you're done and, and stay in the meeting. And that, we will definitely, I think, take that into account as we have our discussion. Uh, I, I hear, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, I really appreciate it, and I'm sorry I didn't understand how this whole thing was working. I was just sitting in the, sitting on, on the screen for, for a while, but. I'll read up on it, and then there's other, uh, contact information on who to go beyond that, in that info?
Um, Dave is?
Mine, I'm Dave, yeah.
No, I'm talking, okay, um, yeah, I, I think, you know.
You can reach out to me for questions as well, so.
Dave's muted.
Right, Mr. Kippl, I, I think would be the other person to speak to in addition. Um, but we're gonna sort of go on and have a discussion about this now, so you can, if you want to just stay on mute, you're, you're welcome to.
I will, I, I'll, I'll mute myself for sure. I appreciate it.
Okay, Dave, do we have other people on Hewitt Street? Or would you rather, Mr. Poggi, just listen on YouTube at this point?
Stay on mute, you're, you're welcome.
You don't, you don't have YouTube? Okay.
I'm, uh, Mr. Toutant is coming into.
Okay.
Hello, sir.
Hi, this is Phil Toutant.
Hi, uh, please give your comments. We're gonna try to keep it to three minutes. Thanks.
Sure thing. One second, let me start my timer. Um.
I'll keep an eye on it.
All right, yeah, no, just for my own reference. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for listening. Uh, I'm Phil Toutant. I live at seven twenty-two Pine Street. I've addressed the commission before. I do want to note that there was no YouTube link provided in this notice that anyone received. There was an email address for Mr. Sensis. I emailed him. I received no information. I've emailed him four times. I, you know, really.
Since the meeting started?
It, um, no, and beforehand. Um, and then, um, also, the agenda only had the Zoom login, and I've been sitting in this Zoom room trying to listen in, so. That's, uh, you, you know, peculiar, uh, to say the least, but in any case, I just think that the commission should organize that, have something where the public who wants to comment has a clear idea of how to do so because what's being said is not actually accurate. Um, as to the Pine Street widening, specifically, I think that, um, you know, my road, my side of the road isn't really gonna be affected, but I do think that the characterization of Pine Street as a collector is kind of strange. Um, I'm not at all opposed to the improvement of infrastructure, the sewer systems, the water mains. I think that sounds great. But the widening of the road is a little weird because the notice, uh, describes Pine Street as a collector. And I, I've seen that in the master plan as well. However, the master plan also, for example, in the table, which I believe is, uh, in the table, which I believe is at six twenty, six dash seven of the master plan, describes collector roads as for trips, you know, less than five miles, for speed limits of thirty to forty-five miles an hour, and parking on both sides of the road. Pine Street's just not that road. Frankly, in terms of the length of the road, I measured it on Google Earth, it's, it's almost, it's a little more than one mile. One point zero five from Ridge to out behind the dome. So it, it, it doesn't meet that definition of a collector. Also, it doesn't have parking on it basically at all, except down at the bottom and on the block between Hewitt and Prospect. And is, is less than two miles, it's a speed limit twenty-five. Frankly, I think this is more of a local road and I think that as a local road, the width of the road should remain unchanged. So I, I just think it's more of a local road and Front Street really fits in better as a collector road for the east side of Marquette under the city's master plan. Thank you very much for your time.
Did you have comments on Hewitt Avenue, sir?
I do not live on Hewitt Avenue and I did not receive the notice as to what's contemplated to be done on Hewitt. So is it, really, I just think that the, the widening of the roads is the bigger problem here. I think infrastructure improvements, really, it's really great that, that that's being undertaken. But in terms of widening of the roads, whether it be Hewitt or Pine, I mean, I can't imagine how Hewitt would be considered a collector, but, you know, I didn't look into that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tutan. So I think Dave was asking that because I actually didn't even realize, but we're, we're discussing Hewitt now, we will discuss Pine Street.
I thought Mr. Tutan wanted to address Hewitt as well. I know that Mrs. Swift does. So, Mr. Tutan, please mute yourself and we'll keep you in the meeting so you can hear. I'm sorry that the, the YouTube livestream information wasn't provided, that was a mistake.
Okay.
I apologize. I'm remembering Mary Swift into the meeting because I know she wanted to address both Hewitt and Pine Street.
Thank you.
Hello, Mary. We're talking about Hewitt and I know you wanted to address both Hewitt and Pine, so. You can now, and unmute yourself.
Okay, you ready for me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I live at the corner of Hewitt and Pine, across from Dave. I just want to give a little history lesson for a second. About twenty years ago, the city had proposed to widen Pine Street between Ohio and Hewitt. And at that point in time, all of Hewitt, between Ridge and Fair, organized, hard to organize during a pandemic, however, because we did not want our street widened. And we didn't not, we didn't really care if we all had the same width, width of street or curbside. What we wanted was green space between the sidewalks and the street, traffic calming, walkability. Unfortunately, in that negotiation with the city, we gave up parking on some of the streets of Pine. Well, earlier you guys were talking about allowing some more parking on streets. I'd encourage that discussion with the people on Pine that caved that up twenty years ago, because it does impact my neighbors more than me. But in terms of both streets, Hewitt Street is already an incredibly wide street. It did used to have a streetcar on it, I think that's why it was so wide, so I can't imagine widening it anymore. We are a neighborhood, we're a neighborhood of old houses, a lot of kids in this neighborhood walking to school. For us, it'd be like, go ahead and shrink Hewitt if you want, as much as you want. It's, it's too wide as already for a neighborhood. And I just encourage you not to take away our green spaces, not to have to move the utility poles because that will impact the trees that the city put in and just impact how our neighborhood flows. It's, it's a neighborhood, it's not a downtown, it's not a business district, we just wanted to state, um, thank you.
Thank you. So you can go on mute and, and just listen in, we're going to be discussing Hewitt at this time. So that's everybody, right, Dave?
That's everybody that wanted to talk about Hewitt.
About Hewitt, okay. Um, okay, so we're going to move on to a commissioner discussion about this. Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yeah, I was searching through our community master plan here as I was listening to citizens speak. And I was curious about that distinction between the, the collector road versus the local road that Mr. Tutan brought up, and I thought that was a really interesting point. Who actually makes that call about, and I didn't find in the master plan where it said specific roads, Hewitt is X, you know, Pine is X. I, I read the memo and I saw that the engineering department, you know, identified them as collector roads, but who, I guess, has the authority to determine a local road, which would have a much more narrow width as opposed to a collector road? Who makes that decision?
I believe in the, in the master plan in figure six-four, that's been, tho- those streets are designated in there as local or major. So Dave, would that have been a planning commission decision from, in the past?
You know, the, these characterizations of the roads go back for, at least to two thousand and four. When the master plan was updated in two thousand and fifteen, there were, there was a, a lot of stuff added to that chapter on transportation. The functional classifications, some descriptions were changed, but the, the classifications were not changed. And I think this, in a lot of cases, it comes down to how the road functions more than meeting the exact kind of criteria that Mr. Tutan called out. Some streets are, you know, function more as collectors and Pine is one that does function as a collector. It tends to collect traffic from those other local streets that cross it because it, it is a street that goes to a, a pretty significant destination in the city with Lakeview Arena and up to Lakeshore Boulevard there. So that, that's the only real justification I can see for Pine Street. I mean, again, a lot of these don't meet the techni- all the technical criteria that might be there for a collector street. It just, in some cases, they were classified that way because that's how they function.
Commissioner Rose?
Oh, sorry.
I'll come back to you. Commissioner Rose?
My, my concern at this point is with notice to the public, since the YouTube link was not, I mean, because we're in a pandemic and obviously, city halls closed, the, you know, access to the public is through YouTube, I'm assuming that's whatever the, I think it's statutory now or, or, because the governor's orders are gone, but, Dave, were there other areas where the YouTube link went out to the public so that they could, I guess, participate in terms of the viewing of these proceedings?
In the agendas that were published, the, you know, or that. So, right out of the agenda, we've got all this, all this agenda paperwork in this sheet where you have your memo. On the back of that, it has all of the stuff with the YouTube livestream information on it. The fact that it wasn't put in those letters is a mistake. And of course, we want to include the public, and, and that's why we send these letters out. The fact that the YouTube wasn't, the livestream stuff wasn't included is a mistake and I apologize for that.
And, and Dave, I, I think, I think, I mean, oversight's happened, I just want to make sure that what we're doing now today, I want to err on the side of caution and just make sure that what we're doing now can, can carry forth into the future, just given the fact that there was just that oversight. And I was just, just erring on the side of caution, I appreciate that, Dave, thank you.
Commissioner Middlefelt, sorry, did you want to finish?
Well, I was just wondering how much authority we as a planning commission have on changing the categories of streets? Because I think there is an argument to be made that, I don't know, I think Pine, certainly Hewitt, I, I would agree with, it feels more local, like a neighborhood type street. I could see the argument, maybe Pine is more of a collector, but I think it is one of these weird, it kind of falls in both categories.
We have a sort of a point of order issue. There are still items of correspondence that have to be considered.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, and that's a, that's definitely a discussion we can have sometime, but that's a, it's a much bigger issue than with amending the master plan stuff, then.
That's what that would take, would be an amendment to the master plan to change?
Absolutely, because that's where the, all these classifications come from. So we have, after the agenda was published, we had three other items of correspondence submitted for Hewitt Avenue. One is from Martha Cook of three fifty-five East Hewitt. She says, "Thank you for the notice of the meeting, I'll be watching on the YouTube channel." Well, no, I'm not sure how she knew. I thought that was in the letters that were received, but she said she's watching on the YouTube channel and she said, "The proposed width of the street will be forty feet from edge of pavement, edge of pavement diagrams show forty to be the old width with the new one forty-three. The new diagrams connect, correct, I have concerns about the change. The new diagram shows a wider driving lane and loss of one and a half feet from the grass Boulevard. The wider driving lane should only require a loss of six inches. Cars or trucks park on the new gutter at the edge. Is it really necessary to remove a foot and a half from the Boulevard? The Boulevard is already quite a bit narrower than it is on Hewitt to the east of Spruce Street. That means we have less space to put snow. Will the city remove snow frequent, more frequently than it has in the past to make up for this lack of snow space? I'm also concerned that the wider street will promote faster driving the residential neighborhood with lots of kids. Thank you for your consideration and these concerns." And another item of correspondence from Kevin Croupy of one twenty-nine East Prospect Street. He says, "I am writing to the planning commission regarding the plan to widen the block of Hewitt between Pine and Spruce Streets. I live on East Prospect, not Hewitt, but I want to comment as a taxpayer to urge the commission to reconsider this project. I was disappointed to read that even though parking is allowed on both sides of this block, the city is planning to widen the street from forty to forty-three and include gutters. The result will be a narrowing of the grass Boulevard between the curb and the sidewalk edge of about one and a half feet on each side of Hewitt. This reconstruction will also likely require relocation of at least some of the electric utility poles towards buildings on the block. The motivation appears to be, that appears to be driving the road widening, the city master plan defines Hewitt as a collector road, implying Hewitt is located in a commercial zone where parking is needed by customers. Travel speeds of thirty to forty-five would be permitted, not true, and twelve feet of widening, wide driving lanes and eight foot wide parking lanes, the rule along the collector roads. In fact, the former Parkview Elementary School, now Marissa, is the only non-residential building on this block. Even if that facility were occupied by more businesses, there's ample space in the parking lot on the south side of the building to accommodate additional visitors and customers. The three hundred block of East Hewitt is historic residential neighborhood and does not fit the city's definition of a collector road. I've lived nearby on East Prospect since nineteen ninety-five and haven't noticed any increase in traffic along East Hewitt over the years, actually less since Parkview closed. Additionally, a few of my neighbors on this block of East Hewitt grow gardens within the grass Boulevard during warm season. If this construction proceeds, these residents will have less room. A shift in utility poles and wires will probably require pruning of the trees along the block and perhaps the complete removal of some. As a proponent of greener communities, I would find this cutting and removal, she's very disappointing. Since the proposal to widen the three hundred block of East Hewitt would not in any clear way benefit residents who live on this block, I don't believe spending our tax dollars on this project would be a wise decision. I therefore urge the city planning commission to drop plans to widen the three hundred block of East Hewitt Street." And from Ken Chapski of, Ken and Susan Chapski of three ten East Hewitt.
That was in the agenda, Dave, do you need to read that one?
I wasn't, okay.
Ken's in the agenda, just to save you some.
Right, I, okay, thank you, that was not, we don't need to read that one then. So that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, I'd like to side with the residents. I, I grew up in that general neighborhood there and I, I don't see what it would benefit to actually widen the street. And quite frankly, to widen the street, it's going to cost more money to maintain that street, it costs more money to put that street in. I don't see it as a collector. I don't, it's gotten less busy since Parkview Elementary is no longer there. You're going to have the school buses coming and going there. I just think it's, I don't see any reason for it. I, I would, I would side with the citizens and say that, keep it the way it is.
Okay, Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yeah, I had another question, too, just in general for Mick and maybe Dave. Another big part of our community master plan talks about complete streets and walkability. And I know Dave and I have worked on a bunch of like bike-friendly city initiatives and I'm looking on my screen right now at the map of the city bike routes that we've been trying to promote. And, you know, we've got a new painting machines, we're trying to make better bike lanes and one of those streets is Hewitt and another one is Pine as a proposed a bikeway. And in the engineering drawings, I saw no mention of how these proposed changes would either promote and improve bikeability on these areas that we've already designated as part of our complete streets plan, part of our bike-friendly city initiatives. I, I am concerned about the increased speeds that we see. I know on Pine, people come flying down that hill. And as someone with children, I do worry about that in, in who lives in that neighborhood. So I'm just wondering if we could talk about, yeah, how this might affect other aspects of our community master plan in terms of the wa- the walkability and the bikeability components.
Yeah, I think, I think you make good points, Commissioner Middlefelt. I guess I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm trying to maybe thread the needle a bit and I, I guess I'm going to go back to my, I, I completely agree with the residents. I, I do think that this road doesn't have high traffic, it, it really doesn't need to be wider. At the same time, you know, I understand that the point of the master plan is to create consistency throughout the community. So I guess I would like to maybe propose a compromise. Well, you know, when I analyze this cross section, you were going from forty feet to forty-three feet. One of those feet comes from adding width to the driving lane. Two of those feet comes from the new concrete curb design. So I guess my proposal would be, can we, on this one, shrink it down to forty-one feet, which would then include those two curb gutters in the width of the street? So we would have six inches added to each side. We would be able to say, we're still following our master plan guidelines for widths of parking and widths of driving lanes. But we would effectively not be increasing a street that really doesn't need to be getting any wider. So I guess I'd just like to put that on the table and see what, what everybody thinks of that. Commissioner Dunn?
I'm with you, um, I don't, maybe this is wrong, I, I guess it's a procedural thing, but I don't even see the need to give it that extra foot because it's, it's functioning fine at the width that it's at, why, why can't we keep it there? And I understand that, that we need to, we need to try and, and meet what the master plan is calling for. But, I don't know, I, I feel, I feel like there's got to be a way around that when it's, when it's the right decision. You know, I, I would hate to, to increase it, you know, by six inches and that means that a tree has to come down on one side and, you know, totally mess up somebody's front yard just because that's what the ma- On one side and you know, totally mess up somebody's front yard just because that's what the master plan says, you know what I mean, if functionally, we don't need a wider road. Which I don't think we do because that that hasn't been an issue, why do we need to increase it at all?
I guess I just go back to to the consistency and you know, people, you know, whether or not they were us or commissioners before us. You know, agreed to these, these dimensions to have uniformity. And I guess I'm I'm just a little bit hesitant to sort of. Break those rules and then do we then sort of, how does this, how does this roll out as we sort of talk, you know, do further reconstructions, do we sort of? You know, I I guess I'm just trying to have some consistency, I hear what you're saying and I I agree in principle that this this road functions perfectly fine the way it is. Commissioner Ruiz?
I I've got a question and then a comment, I guess the question is if we vote this down in terms of widening the street, does the, does that kill the project?
No, you, you need to probably. Find some kind of compromise for this, the money's been budgeted, so I mean, if. You know, again, the master plan's recommendations are are guidelines, they're not hard and fast rules, they're. They're meant to be ideal guidelines for what we would build if. If there's, you know, no obstacles to that. I'm not saying, I I certainly don't want to present the residents. As obstacles because certainly they're the most important experts we have. To tell you about those streets, but. They they are guidelines.
So basically, we could pass this with the condition that the back of curb to back of curb remains at forty feet?
And I would just ask Mick his opinion on keeping it that with with the. Change of curbs.
Sure.
Can I make my comment real quick?
Sure, Commissioner Ruiz, and then we'll go to Commissioner.
So, one of the things that, I know one of the comments was that, you know, snow accumulation. And, you know, there was a question as to whether or not the public works would come by any more often. I've lived in the city long enough to know that the answer to that one's going to be no. You're gonna have to live with the snow the way, the way that it is. And Mick and I actually reside on Alga Street, which is one of those streets that was widened. And we both live on the south side of the street and and taking care of the snow as a result of. Of the widening of the street is a much more difficult. And problematic thing to undertake, so I I definitely do share in in the concerns in regards to the snow removal, I think there's been other. Comments, you know, regarding the speeds and the aesthetics of it that. Point is, I think, all in the right direction.
Ms. Chair, we do have somebody else in the waiting room that I'm going to admit if, okay, I don't know if that's for this project. Mr. Reinhardt, if you're here to talk about Hewitt Avenue, then. Your comment.
Like he's still connecting.
Appropriate here.
Hey Joy, can I just say something quick?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Middlefelt.
I, my comment really was a question for Mick, it wasn't, I was trying to make a point about walkability and bikeability, but I I am also curious about the process that. Mick is the new city engineer, how he weighs that aspect of our master plan when doing new reconstruction, so I was kind of hoping he could actually respond to that and talk a little bit about how. Specifically on Hewitt and Pine, it would affect the bike ability as related to our master plan and the. Proposed bikeways that are designated on those streets.
I'd be glad to. When we have time.
Sorry.
Yeah, but I felt like I I didn't get a response.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we'll hold on to that, let's, we'll, can we come back to that, Commissioner Middlefelt? Okay, so that's noted, I will make sure we address that, so we have Mr. Reinhardt?
Hi there, yeah, this is James Reinhardt, we live down the street at five thirty East Hewitt Avenue, can you hear me okay?
Hi, yep, and so are you here to speak about the Hewitt Street project?
About Hewitt, yeah, if that's all right, if I could still jump in on that, or are you done with Hewitt already?
No, go, go ahead, you can give your comments, let's, we're going to keep it to three minutes, please.
Okay, yeah, I'll be quick, so I wanted to echo some of the things I heard from some others about the. Kind of walk friendly, bike friendly nature of our community, especially being on the same street as Gravearette, there's a lot of community members. Our house and others down the hill and others that that where kids regularly walk to school along Hewitt and. Having a good safe space between the sidewalk and the street is important to us and so any widening of the street does raise our concerns about. Decreasing that space as well as potentially increasing any traffic or speed of the cars traveling along the road there. And one thing I did want to say is it did seem, I know that you guys brought up the the YouTube link issues earlier, I think it was in some places, it wasn't in others, I was able to find it, but. Some clarification because I think a few of us were confused about whether we should be on both or just be on the YouTube and the Zoom, but. It 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 was available, I think, for for some of us. And the last thing I wanted to say is if some work is done, and you might not be the right commission for this, but just wanted to get my voice out as many times I can. Between Hewitt, on Hewitt between Pine and Spruce. Spruce right now is a two-way stop with cars on Spruce allowed to to go through Hewitt without a stop. And given the number of families and children that are walking along that street to school and the bike route that Hewitt is supposed to be. Making that into a four-way stop, if that could be done at the time of any work would be. Ideal to increase traffic, safety and and pedestrian safety in that area, that's one thing I just wanted to raise, and that's all I had to add, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt, you can go on mute and just listen in if you'd like.
I will, yep, thank you.
Ms. Chair?
Okay, yes.
Mr. Reinhardt's comment about stop signs, that kind of issue is addressed by the city's Traffic and Parking Advisory Committee.
Duly noted.
That meeting, that committee meets every month. And Captain, Police Captain Mike Laurel is the staff coordinator for that.
Got that, okay. Um, all right, so let's go back to Commissioner Middlefelt's question, which I believe was for our engineer, Mr. Kilpala, and how. He weighs bike paths and is it biking and pedestrian paths into his decisions on the cross section of the road, am I summarizing that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, so yes, bikes were were not mentioned in in any of the correspondence or or shown on the on the cross sections. Both Hewitt Avenue and Pine Street, they're, they're fairly low, or the the traffic volumes are fairly low on both of those streets, I think like a thousand cars per day on each. So I think that those streets do function pretty well with with vehicles sharing the road with bikes as opposed to to designated bike lanes. You know, maybe that's something we can look into as far as like sharos or things like that. And I think with, as far as the street width goes, you know, I've, I bicycle myself and, you know. A wider street can be more more comfortable to bike on next to a vehicle, but it also. You know, could increase speeds, so that's a. Yeah, there's, there's some conflicting goals there, I guess.
Yeah, if I could ask that a bit, all all of the, and Pine Street and Hewitt Street should have the bike route signs on them now. But all of the streets that were designated as bike routes and we, I think, are adding about nine. Linear miles of streets through this phase one and two, and like I said, I think the first phase is done, which is approximately half of those streets. Have been signed with the green bike route signs. All of these streets on the east side that were designated that way are all like Mick said, they're low volume streets and they're, and that's why they were selected, they're. Considered, we we call them low stress streets. Those are streets that are wide enough, they're not too wide, they're not. We don't consider that they have any factors that make them dangerous like high speeds. Or too much with where people are passing cars in the same lane or so, that that happens when the lanes get too wide. So. This, we're talking about a foot and a half widening on this street, which is really like inconsequential to it as a biking street. If anything, it's going to make it more comfortable for somebody on a bike that's in the street. As far as riding sidewalks in these neighborhoods, that's perfectly legal as well. And reducing the Boulevard from ten feet to eight and a half feet is certainly not changing the. Safety factor of somebody who's distance separated from the street on the sidewalk. I have to, I have to imagine that. Your your safety on the sidewalk is is approximately the same. If you remove that Boulevard from. Pine Street, I mean Pine Street doesn't have any Boulevard on parts of it. That's a whole different situation, that's much more sketchy.
I I agree, I think these are two very different situations. So, you know, we need to come to a decision about about Hewitt Street. But so Dave, just just so I'm clear, you're saying, you know, we, this is a suggestion and as a city, as a planning commission, we would be. Able to just make a decision to change the overall width, should that be?
I I would defer to Mick and say if there's no technical issues with putting the C-two curb in. At the same location, back, back of curb where the straight curb is.
Okay.
If, if that's not an issue, I'd say that I don't see a problem with maintaining.
What are your feelings on that, do you think that making that, going back to a forty-foot wide street, would that, you know, increase danger in any way, would that, you know, would that create any problems? That you really would sort of raise a red flag to you?
No, in fact, the Hewitt Avenue cross section from. Let's see, Spruce Street to Lake Shore Boulevard is quite a bit narrower, I believe there is seven-foot parking lanes and actually ten-foot travel lanes. And that carries, you know, probably a similar amount of traffic, so making that slight reduction, I don't think would 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 pose a. Too much of a safety issue.
So in theory, we could make a motion that approves this with the condition that this curb to curb. Back of curb to back of curb width remains the same. Would that, would that be clear for you, Mike, Mick?
Yeah, we could, we could make that happen, so.
Commissioner Dunn?
You spelled it out so nicely for me, I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead.
So after review of the proposed cross sections and associated background information for zero-three S T R eleven twenty. The Hewitt Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, the planning commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the community master plan and hereby approves the design. With the following condition, that the back of curb to back of curb street width does not exceed forty feet.
Do we have Commissioner Dunn with the motion, Commissioner Ruiz with the second, I'll do a roll call vote now, Commissioner Remo?
Well, I wanted to make a comment, but I'll just vote. Your street actually is narrower, but it was thirty-nine feet, the roadway itself was thirty-nine feet, now it's going to be thirty-eight feet. So, I'll just vote yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Middlefelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andres?
Yes.
Commissioner Ruiz?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well.
Okay, finally, our last street project is Pine Street. And. I'll let Mick talk about the details, we do have. One item of late correspondence and we have. A couple of people waiting to address the commission on this street. And I know Mary Swift is one of those people and that was one of the items of late correspondence and I'll just read that real quick. That she was, the writing in regard to that proposed East Hewitt and Pine Street projects, they're opposed to any widening of these streets, so. Expanding the width of the streets will impair the walkability of the neighborhood, wider streets are the antithesis of traffic calming, so. She explained in her previous comments about the. Twenty years ago, the proposed widening of Pine Street, she mentioned that in her letter and that's pretty much it, so Mick, go ahead with your part of this.
Okay, sure, thanks Dave. All right, I'm sharing my screen here. See. All right, Pine Street, the project limits are from Hewitt Avenue to Prospect Street, the current right-of-way is fifty feet wide. The existing street width is twenty-nine feet from the back of curb to back of curb, there is straight curbing on the street. Sidewalk on both sides, there is currently parking on the east side, the water main is from eighteen eighty-eight. There is no sanitary main on the street, there is a a shared service line. And a lot of the, a lot of the sewers on various homes run through people's backyards underneath houses and such, so this project. That was one of the primary issues as far as why this project was brought up. And you can see the concrete storm sewer there from nineteen thirty-four, the street pays a rating as a five, so it is on its decline. The proposal is to upgrade the street along with the utilities underneath it. The. This street is a collector in the, urban collector in the master plan, however. By my estimation, that that cross section would not fit, so the next. Level, I guess, would be the the local road cross section, which has a proposed width of thirty-two feet from the back of curb to back of curb. With parking to remain on the east side, the sidewalk on the west side of the roadway would need to be moved closer to the right-of-way to. Allow for this proposed cross section. Let's see. And the, the water main is is old and undersized and the sanitary sewer replacing that and curb and gutter would be as proposed as opposed to. The the straight curb. And would extend some of the storm sewer, so here's, here's a look at the cross section, here's an existing. Cross section, you can see twenty-nine feet from back of the straight curb to back of straight curb, seven-foot parking lane, ten and a half feet driving lanes. And the Boulevard is approximately two feet, so if we were to take the, the local. Street cross section from the community master plan and insert that here. There's not a whole lot we can do to move this sidewalk back on the east side, so the widening would. Entirely come from the the west side of the road and the reason with that, reason behind that is the utility poles that are new here in the grass Boulevard. Along with on the north end of this block, there is a driveway that pitches backwards right from the the curb. And it would be almost impossible to make any widening there. So I guess that's, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mick, do we have, should we, we should go on to our public comments?
Yes.
So do we want to start with, Mr. Poggi, do you want to speak again on Pine Street or did you already get all your comments in?
Are you there?
Yep.
Can you hear me? Yeah, so being right on the corner, I I have the 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 perfect position to see everything that's going on right between the intersections. And, you know, the 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 real issue again, on, well, especially on on the west side of of Pine. Is that, you know, that there, since the the proposal is to move further west. It would significantly move the the lawns and the sidewalk and the all the stuff that would. the, all the stuff that we've already spoke about, uh, uh, back. And I, and I think that would be a, a real, um, a detriment to the community in that happening. On, uh, I'm, on the east side, which I'm, I'm on, uh, there's, um, it is, it is an area where they plow for the, for the kids in, 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 at winter, for them to go through to school as, as a school route. And, uh, any movement further that way would, would now put the, you know, would, would be, would be an issue there as well. Um, the, the corner, uh, which is, since we've been here, uh, five years ago, um, has changed from a, a light to a, to a, a four-way stop, which is, uh, something that's, that's, there's mixed feelings about all that. But that, that is such, it is such a high-traffic walking area in that, in that part that, you know, kids are, when it's, when it's time to go to school and time to come home from school and in the evening going back home from the park, uh, it's, it's just a, a real, uh, I, I'm, I'm really nervous about anything that goes on on that street. I've seen people, uh, walking their dogs, almost get hit by cars that go through the, through the, the, the corner area. And anything that we can do to, to make it safer, I think is something that you can't put a price on. And, uh, I just want to just reemphasize that. Uh, one other comment that I know I'm, I'm already getting ready for it this year is, is the way that they plow, uh, when they come up Hewitt, uh, they, they, they make a, a, a turn to go to the north, to go down, downhill. And, uh, they get about halfway in the middle of the block, right in front of Phil's house and Will's house. And, uh, and then they, all that snow that they've brought up the hill, up Hewitt, is, is gets put right in the, in that area. So even though we don't park in the winter, okay, it's a real issue for a place where they're able to put the snow. And, and any movement, uh, on that side of the street, on the, on the east side of the street, would have people being plowed basically up to their doorstep. So I, I just wanted to make those, those.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Poggi. And again, you can go on mute and, and listen in. Um, Mr. Tchutan?
Yes, thank you.
We already spoke, I mean, we did take your comments previously. Um, so if you want to briefly say anything else, but we, we do acknowledge your previous comments.
I will be very brief. And, and one thing I wanted to address actually is an apology to Mr. Stensis as to the YouTube. Uh, so this is the notification I got and it was in a four-page packet that was mailed to me. The only two-sided page is, there's this little blip right here with the YouTube instructions. It doesn't tell how to participate, but I want to correct myself in saying that the YouTube information wasn't provided. It was just buried. So, um, one other thing is just in, in terms of this whole characterization of the collector road, I mean, really, I think Pine should be like a, a local road. And, you know, I know this isn't the right venue, but it should really be more of a yield road where, you know, the goal is to slow traffic down. But, you know, if you look at the map in the master plan, and I know y'all have this, you know, we've, over here, we've got Ridge and, or, uh, Front and Pine. They're just, just a couple of blocks next to each other. And it's very peculiar. That's the only, you know, collector road that I saw in the whole, in the whole city map where you have two roads serving the same purpose right next to each other. Um, other than very short stretches of, of blocks in the downtown area. And, and it just dovetails back to my point that Pine Street, you know, we should be discouraging traffic down Pine Street and, and directing it more towards roads that are better suited for it. Um, that's, that's my two cents worth and my prior comments as well. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tchutan. Um, and so do we have Ms. Swift again? Does she?
Hi.
Hi.
Really quick, just reiterating everything everybody's said. And, um, just that I want to go back again to 20 years ago and the city was proposing widening Pine Street. At that point in time, Pine, you could go to Pine Street all the way around the island and never stop. There wasn't a stop sign at all. Traffic was going 40 miles an hour down our street. And we worked really hard to calm it down. And we got the stop signs put in, got the blinking lights put in. Unfortunately, those were taken out. And, um, I don't want to see anything to, to speed traffic up. We have a lot of kids and people walking in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, do we have anybody else waiting in the wings?
No, um, I just wanted to remind you that there was correspondence in the, um, agenda packet also from David Enjoy Arrow. Dave Arrow, I know, was, uh, had called in earlier. It looks like he couldn't, uh, hang in there for this, but, um, or, uh, he would, he wanted to get into the meeting, but, you know, he, he made some of the same comments that Mr. Poggi did about the yards on that side of the street. And, uh, so that, that's a pretty significant, uh, concern there, that, that one block does have, uh, very, very limited, um, front yard area for most of those homes.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, so we've taken care of public and correspondence. So let's move on to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, again, I'm going to err on the side of the residents here. I, I don't think that road is broke. I don't think it needs to be fixed. And I think it's unfair that the city is going to be encroaching onto their property when, I just don't see this as a major collector road. And I agree with the citizens. I just don't see a need for widening. I'd like to see it kept the way it is. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Larson, did I see you?
Well, I, I was just essentially going to say that if, you know, we've, if we kept road widths, you know, for an area that has, you know, 10-foot boulevards, uh, I, I, I mean, I, consistency and concern, you know, for keeping it with places that have, you know, less than two-foot, you know, areas between the side, sidewalk and street, uh, you know, seem to make sense.
Yeah, I, I mean, I guess, the one thing I want to point out is, you know, I, I think Pine Street really is a different condition. I think if you look at the majority, not the majority, I can't say for a fact, but we do know a lot of the homes on Pine Street are in fact, you know, non-conforming. This, this road was, you know, it, it's, it's an older road. The homes are older. You know, it just, it doesn't conform to sort of these, you know, more recent, um, recommendations of the master plan. So I think this would be a, a case where it really would make sense to maybe deviate from the master plan recommendation. So I guess, you know, maybe right now I just want to ask Mr. Kipola again, like, if we were to keep the road width the same, would we be causing danger? You know, is, is there a red flag? Is there something that should concern us? Um, is there a reason we should, um, be aware of that doing that would cause harm?
Sure. Let me first backtrack. As far as it, the, the current proposal is deviating from the master plan as, as is. It's for a, a local street instead of a, a major collector. So already, we're already taking one step back there. Um, as far as like a, a, a safety issue, um, I, I don't, I don't, I don't see one. It may be an inconvenience issue. Uh, I know Wayne is correct that the, I looked at the, at the, the curb width and it's eight inches at the base instead of six inches. So you do lose, uh, four inches of road if, if we were to keep the, the street the same width and use the, the C2 curb. Um, but I guess I don't see a, a, a major, major safety, safety concern, so.
Commissioner Larson?
Could you use a straight curb in this, uh, in this condition to maximize road space?
I guess theoretically, yes. Uh, not something that we would recommend. Um, I guess it's possible. I'm not sure if a concrete, concrete contractor could do it, but, uh, we could perhaps modify the, the, the width of the, the curb and gutter perhaps, um, to compensate for the extra two inches.
And I, I mean, and I don't know that for, if that, how much of a difference that will actually make. I, I just, more of a.
Yeah, I guess.
Theoretical.
I, I wouldn't, I would not recommend that we go back to the, the straight curb. The curb and gutter has, is a more durable product and it keeps water, uh, especially for the smaller storms and the stuff that collects in the gutter. It keeps it in the gutter and not in the, uh, in the interface between the, the concrete and the asphalt.
I guess one, one thing I just want to go back to, you know, I, I think that Pine Street is a, is a, a road where people go too fast. And I think that anything to keep that road narrow is, I mean, I just, I live on Pine Street. They come flying, even the buses come flying. I mean, if I could add speed bumps every block, I would. Um, so I guess I just think, anything to narrow it and make it, you know, less of the temptation to, to go fast on that street, uh, you know, I'm going to be very supportive of that. Commissioner Andres?
Uh, I don't know if it's me or not, but I'm hearing about every other word when it comes to speaking. So I don't know if it's my connection or not, but I'm.
Is anyone else having this issue? I'm hearing everybody. Is anybody else having this issue? All right. I think it might be on your end.
We do have Mr. Arrow in the waiting room.
Okay.
So.
Do you want to bring him in? Hi. Oh, I'm still waiting for you to connect. Hi, Mr. Arrow. Um, if you want to give us your comments on the Pine Street reconstruction and if you could just limit your comments to three minutes, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. You guys are kind of going by me already. I know, uh, Mr. Stensis talked about the letter that I wrote. I, can you? Oh, I'm not on. Can you hear me now?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. No, uh, well, first of all, I also want to apologize, Mr. Stensis. Um, I, I.
Hello?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, no, we can't. Is he cutting out for everybody else?
Yeah.
It seems like you're coming in and out, Mr. Arrow.
I think because I have YouTube running in the background, it was causing a problem.
Okay.
Um, so I, I muted that. I'm sorry. So anyways, going back again, again, sorry, Mr. Stensis. Um, the biggest thing I was concerned about with the widening of, of Pine in our area, um, was again, we would lose two trees, um, most likely having, when we have to move the sidewalk back, um, my neighbors, uh, the Micahs, who just put a bu, a bunch of money to save their tree, uh, in, and then down on the corner. I know Mr. Dion is not as concerned about his tree, but, you know, those are the only two trees we have left on our side of the block. Um, and then our, our other neighbor, Mr. Bray on the other side, just built a garden in his yard that he would lose too if we widened the street. Um, and then at, I think, 724, they have a really nice, um, area of garden that they built out in front and they would lose that as well. So that, that was basically our big concern. I mean, 100% want to update our 130-year-old infrastructure. Um, but, uh, def, but just want to, uh, preserve the width of our street for a lot of the reasons that you've talked about, to cut down on the speeds. Um, as, even though we're that close to the stop sign, people still end up flying by our house. And, uh, you know, I know that with the Poggies in particular, we had a bet going to see if their youngest child was going to live through one summer because she was like three and ran across the street all the time. Uh, fortunately, she did survive. But, um, you know, it's a, it's a very interesting street we live on. It's old as dirt. Um, there's some areas that are narrow. There's some areas that are wide. Um, it's just, I, I, I appreciate the comments made already by, by the commissioners about leaving it the, to the width that it is. And I would just leave it at that. So thank you for listening and talking to my letter.
So you can go on mute and just listen in if you'd like.
I'm just going to go back to YouTube.
Sure. Commissioner Primo, did I see? Maybe not. All right, do we have further comments on this? Where, where are we at with this? Does anybody want to argue in favor of keeping it as wide as originally proposed? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
All right, sorry. Let's, Commissioner Primo, did you have a comment? No, Commissioner Primo, sorry, I just saw you. Please, please give us your comments.
Well, a little history lesson. Back in the 50s, a big military was the engineer and they came, I mean, they did a study. And they came up with, and if, Pre-C D Lori, remember Steve, they came up with a study that said the road's going 42 inches on each side during the winter. And if you check, they're pretty close to right. Also, they switched the curb and gutter, I believe, because Mr. Hoplow, the city engineer, he was familiar with MDOT and it's a lot easier to say, we'll follow MDOT specs because that way you don't have to think for yourself and have your own specs. It's a lot easier. And also, when you look at this picture, you see the seven-foot parking lane. Well, a lot of cars are wider than seven feet. A truck is wider than seven foot. It's about eight foot wide. And if they got the big mirrors on it, it's wider yet. Also, no one always parks perfectly. You see cars stuck out two feet beyond where they should be. And, uh, you're down to 11-foot lane on, on the proposed, and you're going to cut that down. So I, I, I don't care, but sometimes, um, and I understand the people. I do. And what's, what's going to happen? You know, you talk about their trees and everything, but it's just like people buy a lot. They're going to build a new home. And they say, oh, look at all these beautiful trees. By the time they're done, the same thing's going to happen here. If the stuff in the street is that old, then the utility's going to their house. But the sewer, the water is going to be probably cast, or, uh, galvanized pipe, probably half rotted out by now. And then you have to dig into those houses to put those in. And whatever's in the way is going to come down. I mean, that's just facts, though. But I don't care. If you want to make them narrow so you can slow traffic down, that's fine. I mean, I, I don't care. I'm just saying that. There's other factors that seem to get overlooked all the time.
I understand.
I would bet everywhere their laterals are going to be replaced. That's a good thing.
Point about the laterals, but I guess, I mean, that would be on the individual homeowners.
Well, the city's going to run it to the lot line. That's their job.
So, oh, they'll go to the right-of-way?
So they'll put in copper to the lot line.
Okay. Okay. Uh, yeah, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I, I mean, I still, I guess I still follow that.
Another thing I'd ask, Mr. Kipola, is he's talking about the edge of the, the road where the curb is, if you use the straight curb. The water goes there. Isn't there an edge on the curb and gutter also?
You're, you're absolutely right. There, there is. Um, I, I made the distinction that during, during low flows and during, when times when, when, uh, water is sitting in, in the gutter, uh, it's not going to go into the, go into the concrete, but, uh, it's.
Gutters are typically used in flat places, right?
Yeah.
But then, you know, like on Pine Street, which is a hill all the way down to the bottom. Anyway, that's my comment.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Do we want to have a motion? Commissioner Middlefelt?
Can make a motion, uh, give, give it a whirl here. After review of the proposed cross-section associated background information for 04-STR-11-20, the Pine Street, uh, Reconstruction Project, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the proposed master plan and hereby approves the street reconstruction as, uh, reconstruction design with the following conditions, that the street width does not exceed 29 feet back of curb to back of curb as existing, to match existing width, essentially.
Second that.
Okay, so we have Commissioner Middlefelt with the motion and Commissioner Brooks with the second. So I will do roll call. Uh, Commissioner Primo? We're doing roll call vote. Commissioner Primo? Com, Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks? Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner Larson?
Yes.
Commissioner Andres?
Nay.
Commissioner Middlefield?
Yes.
Okay, so we have one nay from Commissioner Andres and the rest, oh, I vote yes, by the way. Commissioner Cardillo votes yes.
For the record, I vote yes, too.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Ruiz, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ruiz votes yes. Sorry about that. So the motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your input tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to our agenda. So citizens wishing to address the commission on non-agenda items, please say there's nobody. We don't have anybody, right?
I don't think so.
Okay. Then we have our biweekly report. Any comments on that?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, Commissioner Dunn?
The rental registrations, are those, are those totals for the year, or is that just how many were reviewed in this, in this two-week period? Or is that, or is that just from October first? I'm confused as to when those are.
Yeah, we have both there for, oh. Let's see, this starts ten nineteen. Yeah, we need to update this to say for fiscal year 2021. That right-hand column is the aggregate for the year. So the other columns are for the period. And rental registrations are supposed to be, I would think beginning of this fiscal year, which again needs to be adjusted.
So like that, that nineteen short term?
Yeah, I'm trying to know that.
Yeah.
It doesn't quite make sense that was for that period. That would be extraordinary. I'll try to get you a correction on that, because I don't think that's correct.
I mean, I know the market's hot, but that would be pretty crazy.
Well, anything with short term too is running into the, I mean, we were at capacity. We've been at capacity for a long time on short-term rentals. I mean, people can still turn in applications and get on the waiting list, I think, but I, my understanding was the last time I heard the waiting list was about forty-five or fifty long. So I'm, I'm not sure. I'm have to check on that for you.
Okay, thanks.
But seventeen long-term applications wouldn't seem unusual otherwise for, for a two-week period necessarily.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other thoughts on the biweekly report? Okay. And then we have our update on the draft LDC amendments.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let everybody know that next week at your meeting next Tuesday, we're going to have the public hearing for those. And unless anybody's opposed, there's the one change that I mentioned in the email that would move the requirement for, as our attorney said, she really didn't see another way to really create that chain of responsibility for title, basically, to have the accessory dwelling unit you know, noticed as it has to be occupied by the owner or the the own, you know, those occupancy standards have to be applied by deed restriction. She didn't see an alternative to that, but she recommended that we change the the requirement to have that deed work done upfront as a condition of acquiring a zoning compliance permit. And I think all of our staff totally agrees with that. And we, we're, we're not waiting for something that you know, could or could not happen within that one-year period as it was written.
Understood.
Otherwise, everything would be presented next week as for, for your final approval.
Okay, well, that's exciting. A lot of, a lot of stuff we
Code gets.
Great, so there's nothing we have to work out tonight, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay. I guess the one thing I want to bring up is related to that is, you know, I'm hoping, hoping that, you know, Dave, would maybe the start of next year be a good time to sort of start addressing this central business district zoning that, you know, should it go beyond the seventy-four feet or adding sort of conditions or incentivize zoning, I guess, maybe we would be thinking of it. Do you, how, how do we want to kick that off? Do we want to start maybe with a joint meeting to sort of set some goals, maybe on behalf of the city commission and the planning commission and the DDA? Like, I guess to me, it would be kind of, I would like to see us, you know, kind of come together, figure out what our kind of overlapping goals are in potentially doing this, so that when we sort of get into the nitty-gritty of writing that, we really have a strong idea of what everybody would like to see come out of this.
I, yeah, I don't see, you know, why, why you would wait to do that in the future. I don't have any other projects really that the Planning Commission has to be involved with anytime soon. We do have other, I mean, we have, we're constantly going to have other code issues to work on. As far as I can see, unfortunately, that, that's not going to go away. We still have to get at some point start addressing, trying to readdress the situation with the tree replacement issue. So anyway, yeah, and it's totally up to you to decide on how, you know, setting work sessions for that. If you want to do that.
Well, that, I mean, what does everybody else think? I guess that's my thought is I would like to see us set, like, set our intention for it. You know, like, not start with the nitty-gritty of getting into the details, but, you know, what are our goals? What would we like to see come out of this? And I would love to get input from the city commission. You know, with the new seated members who, you know, just from reading their platforms online, you know, they seem to have some ideas about how they'd like to approach these things. As well as the DDA, you know, I think just starting from a place of everybody coming together and talking about this and then kind of getting into the details versus us kind of trying to figure something out from the get-go. Commissioner Middlefield?
Yeah, I agree. I am, I would love to hear, I know there's a committee there, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Affordable Housing, I think. I think it's an ad hoc committee that Evan Bonso has kind of let up, and I feel like they've spent a lot of time doing some research to understand the challenges and some of the stuff. So I wonder if we could, like, ask them to give us a presentation or something, because I don't know that much about any of this, you know, the policy tools to increase, like, density bonuses. Like, after that meeting, I looked it up and I was like, oh, yeah, this is a cool, interesting idea. But I, you know, I just don't know much about it. So it would be nice, I think, for us to maybe ask them to educate us a little bit. I don't know if that would be appropriate, us and maybe the city commission, or us and the DDA, I don't know. But have there be some kind of information session where we're, we're getting educated, I guess, a little bit on how this could work?
Sure. Dave?
Yeah, I, I think at this point, I, having sat in on the last two, I did a presentation with that, that ad hoc committee last month, and then I sat in on their meeting today. And I think they're quite a long way from being able to be in that position to educate the planning commission. They're in the commit, they're in the process of educating themselves by having presentations from a variety of different people with different expertise in, in housing, zoning. And there, I, I just have to be honest and say, my assessment of that is, and with the new city commission coming in, it's hard to get a work session with the city commission. So I really would advise that we do our own homework for a while and come up with a position that we want to present with in consultation with the DDA back to the city commission. Because I, I think that's work, I think you're going to be on your own for a little while in that regard. And I don't think that's a bad thing. I mean, it certainly, there's a lot to, to look into in that. I mean, we've already talked about quite a bit of it, so.
Well, then, do you, do you think at least having the DDA come in, you know, whether it's just the chair or their whole board, just to sort of give us their input?
Yeah, I think starting with, you know, maybe, starting with the executive director and seeing where she's at with what she understands about this kind of thing from her board or what. I mean, they just adopted this plan, but I don't think that it really got into this issue of housing downtown, if that's what we're talking about.
Well, I don't think it's, I don't see it as exclusively housing. I think housing is a component of what we're talking about. And I guess that's what I would like to do is sort of put everything on the table as to what this could be and figure out which of these pieces we care about and that we really want to push for.
Yeah.
And I think housing is a component of it, for sure, but I don't think it's the only component. And so I, that's why I would like to hear from the DDA, like, what are, what are the things they would like to, you know, what are the needs that they hear from the business owners that, you know, are going to be affected by this?
Right. And I guess that's part of, I, I like where you're going, Joy, with, you know, trying to get some consensus on, I think on your part, on the planning commission's part, what, what are the issues? Well, how are you going to frame these issues? What, what all, I mean, the, the DDA can certainly give you some input to that. But I think you have to make up your own mind on, to some extent, on what issues are you, are you trying to put your arms around?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I just, you know, and I know, I know it has to come from us. I just, you know, I kind of just want to, like I said, open, get the conversation as wide as possible before we narrow it down. And I guess I just think hearing from the most amount of people helps us to sort of choose what priorities we want to take on with this.
And I guess it'd be helpful for the, you know, if we didn't say this before, when Joy and I met with the executive director of the DDA and their consultant a few months ago about their master plan process, the consultant asked about kind of asking both the DDA and the planning commission, our staff, about having a more consistent zoning throughout the whole downtown and Third Street District, and did we want to do that? And, and that's you know, that's part of this is we've got different zoning for these different, the waterfront, Third Street and downtown districts. And my thought on that is we just adopted a code for Third Street. And it's actually, you know, it's actually being changed quite a bit as we go along already. And we, we don't know if, how well it's going to work. I mean, we're always seeing some, some other issues with it that we haven't even discussed yet. That, I mean, we, our staff has discussed, but we haven't discussed that with the planning commission. With just how we classify these frontage types in this district. Every, every property on that corridor has to be classified by us when somebody submits a permit as one of six types, frontage types, and those types don't always work real well. And so you know, that, that's one thing I think we got to iron out is, but there's, there's some details in each code that, the waterfront code is working pretty good. The downtown is traditional zoning district, and unless there's some real desire to change that to a more form-based code where you're going to require specific styles of construction or materials, you know, that you just got to kind of keep tweaking for things like the building height and these, you know, maybe bringing in density bonuses or something like that. But I don't think there's a desire to have a whole-scale change or anything now by the DDA.
Right.
But it was discussed.
Commissioner Dunn?
So for, for whatever it's worth, I, I agree that we need to develop our own priorities, but I think that there is an opportunity to have some collaboration and some, you know, some sort of broader goals between different commissions and different, different groups working on things. And one of the ways that that might be achieved is, is if there was, I guess, a broader invite for things like if, for example, if the, if the ad hoc housing committee had an expert come in on affordable housing and give a presentation, why not let planning commission members know about it? And if they can attend, they can attend. And that, you know, that could probably spur some of those, some of those conversations between the different groups that might end up having some joint goals that, that could be sought at from, from multiple different directions. All kind of shooting for the same goal. And same thing with DDA, you know, if the DDA's got somebody coming in talking about boning, density bonuses, then, you know, that would be a good thing for us to hear, too. And I don't know. You know, and those are just examples. I just mean, any kind of educational presentation of any sort for any of those groups. If we can, if we can invite more of the different commissions and different groups all together to those things, that's going to help get us all on the same page. And it'll also help us have some dialogue back and forth and, and maybe stir some new ideas. So I don't, I just, I don't know where those things are posted. Maybe I'm just out of the loop. And maybe everybody is, you know, included in those things, and I just don't know where to find the information, but you know, I'm just, I'm just hoping for more more education, I guess, and, and kind of education from, you know, from a bunch of different angles, a bunch of different groups.
Well, yeah, so I mean, I think those are good points. I guess what we need to do is figure out where we want to start, you know? Do we want to just start by setting a work session where we maybe sort of outline some bullet points for ourselves and then bring in the DDA? You know, or we could start directly with the DDA. But, you know, I mean, I think Dave's right, like, we need to have, you know, we can't just invite them in for like a totally abstract conversation. We need to have, you know, some kind of a point of view. So maybe, maybe the first thing would be to just set, set ourselves a work session where we sort of come out with the goal of, you know, a couple of principles that we'd like to explore. And maybe also, like, canceling out certain things, like, no, we don't want to, you know, revisit Third Street. You know, like, so, so that we sort of keep our focus. You know, I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how, how we can start this so that we move forward productively. Does that make sense? Does that make sense, Dave?
Yeah, I, I really like the, uh, the way you said that is, um, kind of think about it as building a wall around an idea. You want to define what's inside and what's outside, maybe first.
Yes.
What you're going to explore, or at least, you know, frame it. So, uh, do you want to, we could, we could probably do that at your first December meeting? Unless there's something I'm forgetting about, I don't think you've got a real heavy agenda for that meeting.
Yeah, as long as we don't get sort of stacked up with a bunch of other things.
Right. It's just an internal meeting.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, certainly, we can reach out to the DDA, and the, the ad hoc housing committee meeting next month will be an interesting one if anybody can attend, and I'll, I'll send links to you when it's available. They are going to have some people in that meeting that would, uh, I think, be real interesting for everybody that could have could get into that to listen to.
That would be great, Dave, yes, please, please keep us in the loop.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'll try to report back anything as I'm, you know, attending other meetings to you, that would be helpful. I'm certainly always trying to pick things up that we can use, uh, in our department. And, and on that front, you know, I've been working on a, uh, guide to development in the city, which is, is one of the requirements we have for the redevelopment-ready communities project that we're, that we're, uh, part of participating in. And it's kind of got delayed with this, um, needing to update the LDC. But it's, it's almost done, and one of the things we're adding into that, that just is another, uh, reaching out to a different committee, is the Marquette Public Arts Commission wants to have some way to reach out to developers, to offer them the fact that there's funding available for, for developers to include public art in projects that they might do. Um, so we're going to build in a, uh, you know, this is a, we're pretty compact development guide, but we're going to try to build in, you know, at least half a page of very succinct information and links and stuff for, for that purpose, so that those people picking up that guide would know, hey, if, you know, there is this opportunity as well. So those kind of things, we're, you know, we're, we're trying to keep a keep open to the, you know, whatever kind of opportunities there are like that.
Yeah, that sounds fantastic.
But, uh, okay, so I'll put that on my, the radar for a first December meeting to have a work session on, you know, talking about downtown, framing downtown issues.
Fantastic, thank you.
And if you want me to invite Becky Solomon from the DDA, or Becky, forget, or Binco is her new name, she got married last month.
Oh, right.
I could do that, see if she wants to, you know, participate in the meeting.
I mean, I don't think it hurts, would, does anybody think that's a bad idea? Doesn't seem like anybody thinks that's a bad idea, so go ahead, I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so I think we can move on to our commission and staff comments. Mick, do you want, do you have anything you want to say to us? You want to add? Thank you for being here tonight, thank you for working with us, we really appreciate your answering all our questions.
Hey, you're welcome. I have nothing else, so, thank, thank you, thank you guys as well, so.
Um, Commissioner Dunn? You good? Oh, you're good, okay, Commissioner Brooks?
Just wanted to say thanks, Mick, nice work.
Commissioner Primo?
Nope, no who.
Commissioner Larson?
The only thing I would say is that thinking about future road reconstructions, uh, that this is likely, would likely seem to be an issue that will continue to arise. So I don't know, you know, how much you want to take that into consideration there, uh, but the other side of things, though, is more on, on our side in consistency. You know, if, you know, we're if we're, we're looking at, you know, whether it's a, you know, 10-foot bullfighter or a two-foot bull or five-barred, or nobody came, nobody discussed, you know, on, on the other, on, was it college, I'm sorry, I've already for on college, nobody made a comment on college, you know, about widening the road there or shortening, or, or keeping it the same width. So I think there's a potential issue with consistency, you know, that, you know, we potentially have. And, uh, so it's just something for us to, to keep, to keep in mind, uh, there, and, you know, that could raise, you know, some potential issues, you know, after, after the fact. Uh, and I don't know what rounds they would have, but if somebody on college, like, wait a second, you held it back on, you held it back in these other two neighborhoods, based off of residents, you know, concerns and not our neighborhood, you know, based off of similar.
No, I, I think it's a, it's a very valid comment, um, and I, I, you know, I was thinking of that myself, you know, is, is this just going to be an issue of the squeaky wheels, get their roads not widened, so, you know, it, it is something, I mean, and that's kind of why I was trying to find some, some compromises, but, um, you know, yes, we should, we should definitely be aware of that. Um, was there anything else, Commissioner Larson, sorry? Commissioner Middlefelt?
Um, well, first, I don't think democracy is a spectator sport, so I think that people who came out and spoke up and had grid, good arguments, I think we listened to them and made decisions accordingly, so I feel okay with that, and college is more integrated into the business portion of that area, so I, I'm, I'm actually okay with that. But actually, my other comment, I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Larson on helping to organize a fantastic conference yesterday on UP, um, it was, I think, the first ever UP Clean Energy Conference. And our own Michael Larson did a really great job of bringing some fantastic speakers statewide to help, help us think through how, how do we move to a clean energy future, and what's the role specifically of planning and zoning? And, and Michael did a really great job of pulling that off, so thank you, um, Commissioner Larson, for your work on that.
It's fun.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Well, now I have a comment. Congrats, Mike, but what, why didn't I know about this conference?
You're not, not, need to get on my email list, I'll put you there.
Uh, okay, Commissioner Ruiz?
I'm good, no comment.
Okay. Um, and yeah, I think I've, I've said enough this evening, so, uh, thank you, everybody. And, uh, oh, Dave, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be talking with Mick about the the master plan stuff, I mean, we're, we're, it is going to require a deep dive, and you know, as I said, some of these roads, they're, they're different from one block to the next, and, um, I, I really do think the function of the road was probably more of a factor than those specific criteria that are listed in there for what an ideal collector road is. But when the road functions as a collector, when people tend to drive to it and they use that road, because maybe it's the road that takes you to Lakeview Arena or whatever it is, I think that's probably how a lot of those roads got designated like that, but again, Mick and I talked about this before the meeting, that the master plan is just guidelines, but maybe until you have the, you know, you put that out there to the public, you're not necessarily going to get all that kind of feedback that you need to make a decision on what makes sense. So I, I think it's kind of unfortunate that we had to go through a lot of that tonight with, uh, the same, you know, from every resident on Pine Street telling us the same, you know, don't do this. But, uh, yeah, hopefully, we can figure out a way to, to tighten some of those up, and I'll, I'll definitely be keeping that in mind, so. But thanks a lot, Mick, you did a good job.
Commissioner Dunn, did you have something you wanted to add? No, okay. Well, yeah, and I guess it always, it is nice when people come out and then they do feel like they've been responded so to, so at least, you know, they feel like their participation in this was not for nothing, so. Uh, all right, thank you, everybody, uh, I adjourn this meeting. Have a good night. Thanks.